Good evening, everyone. What happened to the energy in the room? Good evening, everyone. Good evening. We are so excited to see you all here for our February 19th meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. At this time, I will call the meeting to order at seven. Time is it? Seven thirty-seven P. M. We have our agenda in front of us already, and so I'll ask for an approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
A move to approve.
Okay. It's been moved by Director Shunovsky. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Chang. All those in favor, please signify with a sign of aye.
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 Aye. Opposers have the same sign. Abstentions, the ayes have it. The motion passes and our agenda is approved. Tonight, we have a very, very, very exciting presentation that will happen here for all of your eyes to see and for everyone watching online. YGB, Young Gifted and Black, is one of the most amazing programs that we have here in Berkeley Unified School District, and they perform all over the Bay Area, enlightening people and educating them about Black history and Black excellence. And every year during Black History Month, we welcome them for a presentation to the Board of Education and to our BUSD community. And this year is like every other year, and so we are excited to welcome YGB back for their presentation tonight under the direction and leadership of their phenomenal and amazing director, Akira, who has been just phenomenal throughout the years. And so we're so thankful for her and for all that she does for our students in BUSD. And so I'm going to ask my colleagues if you all will please join me down below so that we can get a front row seat to this amazing excellence that we are about to view. In addition to that, those who are watching online, our sound system is not working right now. We've been having some technical difficulties tonight. And so what we will do is we will record this evening's performance, and when we upload our meeting, we will upload a special recording of this, of tonight's performance, so that everyone will be able to watch and hear online. All right? With no further ado, colleagues, we can take a seat in the front, and please help us in welcoming YGB.
We teach Black students Black history. We do a good performance poetry, rap, and freedom songs, and they share with the community what they're learning. We've been working, as Coach Brown said, with Berkeley Unified School District. So a lot of our students go to school in Berkeley Unified School District, but not all of our students. We have been serving the Bay Area for the past, geez, fifteen-plus years. My grandmother started this organization in nineteen eighty-one. It was in New York, and so we did our uphold the legacy and have renewed the community to do so. So we hope you enjoy the performance. If you want to learn more about YGB, you can go to Proud, the number two D Blackout, or we're always fundraising, we're always working with faith, or always hoping to provide a better future for our young ones. Okay? So please listen to what they're saying, but they're not here to be impotent. They're here to teach you, so they need to listen to the words that they're saying, but also, you know, we do hope you enjoy it. So without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, y'all get to do what. What's the first rule?
Don't stop here. Damn. Control. The African pledge.
The African flag.
We are an African people.
We are an African people.
We'll remember humanity, our land, our glory, our suffering. Our ancestors. You will honor. Struggle. Our elders. Drive. New values. A new life. You are people.
We are people.
You will have peace.
We will have peace.
And harmony. Love them. We will be loving. Sharing. Air creative. You will work. Study. Learn. Learn to make peace. You will cultivate. Protect the light. You will struggle. Resurrect. And unify. Our homeland. You will raise. Many children. Our nation. We will have freedom.
We will have freedom.
And destiny.
And destiny.
We are an African people.
We are an African people. Me, well, man. (singing) 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 We are the people. We are young, love. Our people. Our people. We are home to the people. We are the people. We are the people. Our people. Our people. No sacrifice. We are fighting for our rights. We don't feel the pain. We don't, our people, so they can't be killed. We should call. We have victory. We are, we are. We say, you are, I don't want to stress. We are from the people. We are God's child. What I make, what I do, we don't dedicate to our people. How we can, we can tell. How we can, how we can. We are God's child. We are God's son. We are God's daughter. We are God's son. We are God's people. We are God's people. I can't believe. (singing) Oh. What is you for? The revolution that's come. We are open to God. The revolution is here. We must go from fear. The God is not in the law. We must move to the law. The time is to go back. We are young, we can fly. What is you for? What is you for? What is you for? What is you for? What you for? I feel well. What you for? I feel well. What you for? I feel well. Feel well. What you for? I feel well. What is you for? Say our word, free. What is you for? Tell me, you will make one, baby. We are asking you. 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 All right.
This is the birth of a beating heart, on marching feet and a clapping path. We will recall our ancestors to occupy our battles. We will embody our heroes both still being themselves. We will ask our elders for permission. We give it. We will run. We'll try. Run. Try. Please, people. I'm. 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 I'm.
People. Dead. People. Dead. Marching on to freedom. And none of them know hatred. Don't worry, you're not. Oh, son. Don't worry, you're not. Don't worry, people. Dead. People. Dead. Marching on to freedom. People. Dead. People. Dead. Marching on to freedom.
Three, two, one. Ho.
People. Yeah. This is my. Today. We can start that meeting. I'm not need a next meeting. That is the one. People. People. Black rock. Black rock. Black, we can be black rock. Black power. Black rock. Black is the other floor. What is something for the world? Little, little. People. 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 Yeah. Make. People. So. People. 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 Black. Black. People. 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 That's when you're back today. It's not what you think it's not. It's people. That is how we look. Finding our Black victories. Because of him, people are. This is what I mean. Yeah. This is my. People. Don't want this, I mean, we're. Let's talk to each other. Not today. I'm a, yeah, I'm a black, we be. Now, black rock. Black rock. Black, we can be black rock. Black power. Black rock. Black is your black rock.
That'll. Hey, great job, Tom. I'm just gonna. I. Go for it. You like. Okay. Yeah, maybe you're on. If you never know what they said. That's why. I mean, I don't know. They didn't tell me. I sit here, mom. I'm ready. Why do we? All right, Tom, it's fine. Let me be serious. Be serious. Be serious. All right. Thank you. Got all that, bud. There are stuff for you. We got a lot of new ways. Good guy. Yeah. Good guy. Come on, we're gonna. Thank you for doing that.
Oh, that was really zoomed. They're amazing. They, they reached out. Thank you so much again, YGB, under the phenomenal and capable leadership of Akira. We are so thankful to have just amazing educators, young educators, in the room with us tonight, and we're so grateful for you all taking the time out of your busy nightly schedules to be here with us. So please give it up one more time for YGB. At this time, Ms. Charis, can you please call the roll of the board?
Presente. Director Jennifer Shunovsky here. Student Director Winter Clark here. Student Director Evelyn Velazquez.
Here.
Director Jennifer Cornes, excuse this evening. Vice President Mike Chang.
Hello, here.
President Kadeja Brown.
Present, thank you. Director Chang, if you, Vice President Chang, if you could please report out from closed session.
Absolutely. Three point one. A portion of the items were moved by Director Shunovsky, seconded by President Brown, second, and the board voted unanimously. Three point two point one, the board heard an update and provided direction. Three point three point one, Director Shunovsky moved and Vice President Chang seconded to accept the district's recommendation, and the board voted unanimously. Three point three point two, Director Vasudev moved and President Brown seconded to accept the district recommendation, and the board voted unanimously. Thank you.
This completes the report from closed session. At this time, we typically have our superintendent comments, but unfortunately, as you see, our superintendent is missing from the dais this evening. She is ill, not doing so well, so if you could please send her messages of encouragement as we hope that she gets better soon, and messages of healing. We definitely miss our superintendent anytime she is not in the room. Her bright bubbly spirit and personality is always missed, and so we hope that she heals and gets better soon. So please send her warm thoughts as we wait for her to come back to us healthy and healed. We will move on this, at this time, to our open session for public comment. And right now, I only have four speaker cards, and so we will only hear from these four commenters this evening. And after that, we will move on to Zoom to hear our public commenters on Zoom. Because we only have four speaker cards, I'm going to allow each speaker to speak for two minutes instead of our typical one minute when we have over ten speaker cards. And so I'm going to invite the first speaker to come tonight, which is going to be Nomoto Abina, who will speak at the dais, followed by Nomoto will be Peter Wright. Okay? And so Peter, if you'd like to go ahead and get in line, we will hear your public comment after Nomoto. Welcome, Nomoto.
Good evening, honorable school board members, and special shout out to superintendent. Hope she gets well fast. I'm coming here to speak to you guys tonight about a subject which I believe you've probably gotten many emails about, and that's about the pedestrian and bike access to Longfellow Middle School. And with the new workforce housing, we are switch, supposedly switching our drop off to Virginia Street, which happens to be a bike boulevard. We ask that you guys consider working with the city to switch that to a more suitable entrance. We also are asking that you work with the city to get a stop sign put on, put up at Kane Street, and also work with them to find a suitable parking, because we are losing our parking lot, and our educators have graciously agreed that our students should have a playground. So they are going to be losing their handicap parking, so if you could work for that. And just in general, safety and traffic safety around all of our schools. Thank you, guys, for working with the city, for having extra police present, at least at Cragmont Elementary, and I also noticed some extra presence around Longfellow this morning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At next, we will hear from Peter Wright, followed by Joe Leisner.
Thank you very much. I really enjoyed the show tonight. The performance is amazing. My name is Peter Wright. I am a Berkeley native, Berkeley High School alum, and a proud parent of three Berkeley High School graduates. As someone who's been engaged and highly motivated to help bring tennis courts back to Berkeley High School, I fully support the board's plans to construct four or possibly five tennis courts on the Berkeley High School campus. I've spent over two decades helping devise a plan to help bring tennis courts back to Berkeley High School. I've attended school board meetings, community meetings, city council meetings, two-by-two meetings, and through it all, it's clear there isn't a perfect solution and one that will be universally accepted. However, I'm here tonight to say I support the school board's plan to build new tennis courts at Berkeley High School, tennis courts that were included in the bond measure that Berkeley voters recently passed. I'm here tonight to say that new tennis courts at Berkeley High School not only support the tennis teams, but support the entire student body through PE classes, and they support everyone in the community who will benefit from having accessible tennis courts. According to an announcement just today by the United States Tennis Association, tennis participation has experienced five consecutive years of growth, with one in twelve Americans playing tennis in 2024. The USDA also recently shared results of a long-term study that found tennis players live almost ten years longer than non-tennis players. And so I hope these young people will be playing tennis and living a long life. Finally, I encourage everyone here tonight, and those of you online, to get in, dust off your tennis racket, get out and play tennis, and hopefully we'll all be doing that soon on the new Berkeley High tennis courts. Thank you.
Thank you as well. We'll hear from Joe, and then followed by Victor Ward.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak on your dime. Well, I came up tonight because I'm really terrified about what's going on in this country. We are in the midst of a coup, and it's a serious coup that involves all of us, and I don't have much faith in the Congress. Either party in the Congress has not really stepped up. And the thing that I'm using this platform to announce is that on the 28th of April, we're asking everybody to boycott the big businesses, especially those that are in the hands of the billionaire class that are tearing the government apart. And this economic boycott has been called in defense of DEI, the diversity, equity, inclusion programs, which are being rolled back in the federal government, especially Black. Federal employees are being targeted. I just learned today. It's a beginning. It's probably not going to be, you know, a general strike, but we need to build something that's independent of politicians. It's, we're asking that everybody do what they can. Essential services, you know, that you need should not be avoided. People that have to pay tolls to get to work, that's all understandable. It's all being done under the hope that it will build, because it's, right now, it's the only thing we have. And it does inspire me to the great ends. I was in the Mississippi Freedom Summer in sixty-four, and to see these beautiful children expressing themselves in the freedom songs that we used to sing is really inspiring. So tell your friends, try and support as much as you can. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Joe. Our final public commenter this evening will be Victor Ward before we move on to our Zoom commenters. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to start off by saying thank you for your service. You have incredible patience and great listening ears, so I appreciate that. I'm here to talk about something I call it real time. It's something that my company has produced. It's a digital video yearbook, which allows students, teachers, parents, and administrators to upload their own memories, pictures, music, videos, transforming the traditional yearbook from a one-size-fits-none to something that's really personal and memorable. And I've been through a few graduations in my time, but the two most important graduations were my sister's graduation from medical school. And when I, about thirty years ago, I was a long-term sub in Oakland Unified, and I had a fifth-grade classroom, and during graduation, all the fifth graders got to sing "I Believe I Can Fly." And I'm sitting there watching my students, and I'm crying. But when you think about graduation, it's the happiest time of the year, and it's missed by every traditional yearbook. If you think about what we just saw here today with YGB, that cannot be captured by a page in the yearbook. No music program, no VAPA program, no sports program can adequately capture the magic that happens in the traditional yearbook page. So I just wanted to raise that. You know, it's, I'm sure there are plenty of teachers and students who are working hard on the yearbook committee, but they're producing a yearbook in the year 2025 using eighteen twenty-five tools. So it's time to do everyone justice and move into the modern age. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well, Mr. Ward. We will now move on to our public comments that are online, and as of now, I see four hands online, and so we will not take any other hands after Lindsay Nofelt begins. And so, okay, and now there are five hands, so we won't take any other hands after Lindsay Nofelt begins. And you all also have two minutes online. I understand that it is a little difficult for you to see the timer here in the boardroom, and so what I will do is I'll let you know. I'll hold up this paper when you have about thirty seconds left, and then I will interrupt you when the two-minute timer goes off. So just be prepared for that. Again, Ms. Charis, we're going to begin with Lindsay Nofelt, so if you could please promote Lindsay Nofelt. After Lindsay Nofelt, we will then receive the comments from Sofina Jones. Okay? Welcome, Lindsay. Whenever you are ready, you may begin. Again, when your thirty seconds is about to run up, I'll put up this white piece of paper unless you can see the timer behind me. Oh.
They're zooming into the timer. This is nice progress.
He's, he's great. He's on fire tonight. Great comments and great tech support. So you don't even need me. Go ahead and look at the timer, and whenever you are ready to begin, your time will begin.
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Nofelt. I'm speaking as a parent on item fourteen point three, curriculum adoption. There have been a lot of great gains in the year and a half that the curriculum and instruction department has been formalized. Under the literacy action plan, the district has made great gains toward using evidence-based practices in early literacy instruction. I and many others hope that this movement toward a structured, explicit, knowledge-building curriculum will help many more students learn to read, write, and spell on grade level, setting students up for the bright future we know that they have. There is, as always, room for improvement and room to keep on learning. My first point is that evidence doesn't mislead, but anyone can find a piece of research that reinforces their worldview. This is why the words "evidence-based" are much more powerful and accurate than using "research-based." The true difficulty in choosing curriculum is sorting through the options to find high-quality material and, importantly, ignoring the charlatans. Point two is that we yet, have yet to hear of a measured, consistent, and public review schedule of curriculum used in our schools. BUSD needs to fulfill the promise of board policy and make a review plan and budget to ensure our teachers have the support they need so that they can fill all the other tasks. to ensure our teachers have the support they need so that they can fill all the other tasks that they have. And the third is that we should apply learning to multiple subjects. Through the literacy work, many teachers are starting to understand how brains learn, that foundational skills are essential, and that teaching concepts explicitly, then allowing practice, helps to reach all learners. These tenants apply to all other subjects, too. We can build on this movement to improve outcomes for students. Thank you so much.
Thank you as well, Ms. Knofelt. We will now move to Sofina Jones, followed by Daniel Brownson.
Hello, all school board members. Also shouting out my dear and lovely Evelyn. Hey, girl. My name is Sofina, and I am here tonight representing the Bridge Program at Berkeley High School. I'm here to speak about maintaining the budget for Bridge for the next academic school year. Bridge has a long waiting list of students who would benefit from the one-on-one support and structure of Bridge and would benefit from having the relationships that Bridge provide in the after-school setting with supporting homework and college-based services. And right now, they are graduating two cohorts of seniors. And if the budget is maintained in the next academic school year, Bridge will be able to bring the, now on the waiting list, about 40 students to bring in two ninth-grade cohorts. And so if we bring in those ninth-grade students, that would ensure that Bridge can maintain their budget for this year. Bridges has supported over all of their students to be 100% A through G eligible, and 96% have been applied to colleges and applied to four years and got in. So this is a benefit program that I know that will be beneficial to students, especially in this time for Black and Brown students might be losing a lot of services with the federal government, and Bridge will be able to support those students. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Daniel Brownson, followed by Tanya, or Tonia?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Welcome. We can hear you.
Okay. I'm a member of BCC-E, and, but I'm just commenting just for myself. I'm not representing the union. But I know that the district is facing some budget trouble, but I believe that there are a few ways that that can be mitigated. Others have probably already told you this, but we have very, very expensive contracts with staffing companies that if we actually hired for those positions directly, would actually save us a ton of money. Also, I've made my supervisor, Pauline, aware, but I think we can, we have a lot of flat roofs in, in, in BUSD, and there might still be state programs to, for solar panel installation. That way, we wouldn't be hemorrhaging money to PG&E. Lastly, this is unrelated, but I would, I commend the district for, you know, taking steps to protect our immigrant students. And I would encourage, you know, all further efforts, both in that area and protecting diversity in our staffing and in our program as, you know, both immigrant communities and communities of color are under attack at this time.
Thank you, Daniel, for your comments. I think we were hearing from Tonia, Tonia next, but if Katie is ready, Katie, we will receive you at this time.
A small but mighty school. And I wanted to bring up a topic that I think is going to be brought up soon by Ann Caligari from the African-American Success Framework. But I've heard from multiple students that they've been discouraged from coming to our school by their counselors. I can give specific instances, but I don't necessarily want to name names. But multiple students have informed me that when they expressed being interested in Berkeley Technology Academy, they were told it wasn't the right fit for them because they were college-bound. I would like to point out that our students are college-bound. We just had a student accepted to an HBCU and another student accepted into UC San Diego. It is concerning to me that students are being told not to come to our school, especially when those students are expressing a straight interest in our school. I know students are often being told that they should go to BIS instead, and BIS is fantastic, but it's not a traditional school format, and so it's not, it doesn't have the structure that's right for everybody. And many of them are being told to stay at BHS, even if they are very credit deficient. So in order to increase our overall district graduation rate, because our school allows students to collect their credits faster, and in order to keep the community at BTA alive, I think we, there needs to be a serious discussion about who and when students are recommended to come to BTA. And I know we don't have a lot of teachers, and the argument often is made that we don't have enough teachers to have more students. I would argue that we don't have enough students to have more teachers, and that both ways could be looked at. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for, for your comments. Thank you. All right, and we will go to our last public speaker for tonight. I am sorry if I'm hearing your name. When you come on, can you tell me if your name is Tonia or Tonian?
Tonia.
Tonia? Okay, I had it right.
Yes, you had it. You had it. Good evening, board members. I am coming to the board about the Bridge Program. My son is, will be a Longfellow graduate. He will be going into Berkeley High. And he needs the support from the Bridge Program. He, he's one of the students that is currently, one of the 50 students that's currently on the waitlist. And it's very scary and it's intimidating to me because my son, he does need the extra support. He needs the extra help. He needs that one-on-one communication and that one-on-one bond with the additional support that the Bridge Program offers. So I am bringing that to the board. I would like to recognize the, sorry, I would like to recognize all of the great things that the Bridge Program offers. You know, they need that four-year support, especially trying to go into a college, even if it's community college. He still needs that because that's something that he's thriving for. He needs a safe place coming from out of junior high school into high school. Because Berkeley High is a really big place. I graduated from Berkeley High in 2004, and I know how easy it is for you to get lost inside of just the school itself. And I'm very hands-on with his case manager right now. I really love her, Ms. Bell. I have to shout her out because I love her so much. But, you know, we communicate every day. We, she lets me know what's going on with him. If he's having a good day, a bad day, you know, and he needs that support. So we want to keep the funding the same for the Bridge Program. That will really help a lot of students, especially ninth graders.
Thank you so much for your comments as well. This ends our public comment period for the board this evening, and we will go on to committee comments. Are there any folks who are here for committee comments? If so, you are more than welcome to approach the microphone at this time in no specific order.
Hi, my name is Vicki Davis. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm speaking to report on behalf of the Berkeley School's Excellence Program Planning and Oversight Committee and the 29 members of the PNO that represent all our school sites across the district. Myself, Vicki Davis, and my co-chair Nicole Chabot would like to start by welcoming the new and returning board members after the November election. We thank you for your service to the district. We would like to take a moment to recognize Weldon Bradstreet, our previous co-chair, who served in that role for six years. We thank Weldon for his service on behalf of the district, as well as his many volunteer roles in service of safety within the city of Berkeley. In addition, we thank all current members of the PNO for their time and commitment to serve on our committee. Our committee holds an average of 15 meetings per year, each one typically lasting two to three hours or more. Last year, we reviewed over 100 documents, presentations, reports, and budget proposals, requiring many advanced hours of preparation. This collectively represents over 1,500 hours per year by our members, who are parents, staff, and teachers volunteering their time, who serve on this committee as a true labor of love for our students, and we wholeheartedly thank them. Finally, we would like to thank our staff, Kathy Fleming, Director of Local Resources, Craig Kaufman, Budget Analyst, and Danielle Perez, our BSEP Program Specialist, for their dedication and hard work in bringing the many reports, data items, budgets, and presentations to us. Without their tremendous efforts, our work could not be done. This year, the PNO made several process adjustments with the goal of improving our focus and efficacy. First, we restructured our annual timeline, starting our election and meeting schedule a month earlier and adding three additional meetings in the fall. This allowed us to complete our review of previous year's programs earlier in the calendar year and giving us more time to focus on next year's budget building. We also streamlined and restructured the department reports to focus more on goals, activities, challenges, and most impactfully, we are beginning to incorporate and measure metrics of outcomes. The intention of this new structure is to enable budget managers to evaluate the efficacy of their previous work and aid in their development of next year's programs and budgets. At this time, we have completed a review of all the 2324 BSEP and BERRA programs, such as libraries, VAPA, professional development, and student achievement strategies. Starting this month, we will shift our focus into reviewing proposed programs and budgets for the 2526 school year. Based on feedback we shared with budget managers over the past few months, we hope to see a shift in programs that align with the metrics demonstrated in their reports, prioritizing funding and focusing on positive outcomes for students. All materials and meeting recordings are available to the public online at the PNO page and district website. You can find this at www.berkleyschools.net/departments/bsep-planning-and-oversightcommittee. Thank you to the Berkeley voters for passing Measure H. Because of this, we are still able to provide smaller class sizes and the many programs supported by the BSEP tax measure, even in this year of budget cuts to our general fund. Thank you to our Berkeley taxpayers for supporting and prioritizing education in our Berkeley community. Thanks.
Thank you, Vicki. Next, I'll welcome Rebecca Levinson.
So this is a shout out to our superintendent. We hope you feel better soon. We miss you tonight. I'm the co-chair of the Gender Equity Sexual Harassment Advisory Committee. The intention of our committee is to get granular in opportunities for prevention and earlier intervention when it comes to climate and culture relative to sexual safety and bullying. So I'm coming here tonight in problem-solving mode, recognizing both the fact that hashtag we broke and the silver lining of reimagining what comes with that reality. Here's what we know and what we could use your help with. We know that the bullying of LGBTQ+ students has increased dramatically since Trump has taken office. We have heard this from students, parents, counselors, and teachers. We know with bullying, there's an increased risk of suicidal ideation and substance use disorder. This truth equals a call to action and a reimagining of what safety looks like. This moment requires that we move from a sole focus on physical safety to having a clear component that's about emotional safety. Specifically, we are thinking about expanding the role of safety officers and promoting the idea of safety specialists. I want to be clear that I'm not suggesting we add staff, but rather with the staff, we have expanding skill sets. Yesterday, at the Berkeley High School Safety Committee meeting, we got to hear from a safety officer telling us that they want more training. They want more skills for the day-to-day. They want to know how to better address substance use, et cetera. As we bring together both the recognition that our LGBTQ+ students are struggling and that safety officers themselves are wanting to broaden their skills, it seems the concept of reimagining safety officers into safety specialists fits the moment. We see safety specialists having both skills in de-escalation, transformative justice, and that they're very comfortable working with our LGBTQ+ students. We see these folks as comfortable going into gender-neutral bathrooms when there are issues, comfortable having conversations and referring students to supports. In order to modify a job description, and by the way, this is where you all come in, we understand we first have to bring it to you for approval. This is a formal request, asking the board to consider this reimagined and expanded position. The idea has all the magic sauce to meet the moment and perhaps make us better and stronger than we've ever been. We see these safety specialists both as folks who are physically keeping our campuses safe and breaking up fights, helping with fire drills, all the things that they do now. But with this new added lens, they are also stewards of emotional safety. They will be the folks that are the connectors to the wellness center, to the counselors in the middle schools, or notice the kid in the hallway that needs some extra noticing and care. So that's idea number one. Here's idea number two. We've had five deans of students at Berkeley High School in the last four years, if my math is correct. Let's also reimagine this position because when, because something's not working. We have seen incredible individuals try their hardest year after year. By way of background for our audience, the dean of students' position is an administrative position, but probably the most junior admin position and often gets the brunt of the hardest duties. I mention this because at the last board meeting, I mentioned, I mentioned this at the last board meeting, the safety committee that the dean chairs has been a very problematic committee. This isn't because she isn't dedicated and smart. It has everything to do with being green. You need a, you need a strategic seasoned person in this role. Keeping it as a junior position isn't working. So I know that the case is hashtag we broke, but this might actually be a place, if we spend a little bit more money, we get a whole lot more positive culture change in our community. Lastly, and I've got 42 seconds left, I want to leave you with something that's spelled out in the California Constitution in Article One, Section 28, that provides that all students and staff of primary, elementary, junior high, and senior high schools have the inalienable right to attend campuses that are safe, secure, and peaceful. In our own mission statement, we talk about children being safe. I'm hoping each one of you are doing everything you can to move the hearts and minds of our mayor and our city council members to clear the encampment in front of Berkeley High School, which continues to be to clear the encampment in front of Berkeley High School, which continues to be, uh, dangerous and, um, yeah, just a, a really complicated place for students to have to pass. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you as well for your comments this evening. Uh, next, we will move on to union comments. Do we have any union comments? Okay, hearing that, we will move on to board member comments. Um, first, I'd like to thank everyone, uh, for coming out tonight. Um, I'd like to thank those who took the time to speak to the Board of Education regarding the following topics: pedestrian and bike access, um, at Longfellow, uh, the tennis courts, and the invitation for all of us to get out there um, in an effort to live a longer life, but to also prioritize, um, having tennis courts uh, at our, in our, within our district. Um, I'd like to thank those who spoke about the upcoming economic boycott um, to support DEI efforts and to sound the alarm on what is happening in our country. Like to thank those who spoke, um, in regards to our, uh, the option, opportunity for a digital yearbook, uh, bringing us to the twenty-first century, uh, as well as those who spoke about curriculum needs and shifts, and who spoke highlighting the need for the continuation of the amazing Bridge Program. Uh, additionally, I'd like to thank those who spoke tonight about the twenty-twenty-five budget, protection for our students, and the encouragement to protect diversity in our staffing and our programs within BUSD, and, uh, the, the import, very important comment, uh, in support for, uh, Berkeley Technology Academy and identifying all of the amazingness that that school, uh, has to offer, as well as, um, uh, condemning the discouragement of stu- for students to, um, to enroll i- into such a great, great, um, academy. Additionally, I'd like to thank, um, BSEP PNO, as well as G-Shack for their, um, committee comments this evening. I'd like to report out on our last committee me- uh, our last policy committee meeting and thank Vice President Chang, as well as Yasmina, uh, for their collaborative work and, uh, the policies that, and AR regulations that we are bringing forth this evening. And so you'll see on tonight's agenda for information that there is a, uh, board policy and AR for continuation education, um, as well as a policy around conflicts of interest. And so both of these items are on information again and will be brought to the board, uh, during the next meeting for board approval. Uh, I'd like to take this time to issue a public apology for today's cancellation of the two-by-two committee meeting. Um, and we had to cancel unfortunately due to a, um, incompatibility of duties conflict of, under the California Government Code, uh, which prohibited the participation, um, of certain members on today's, uh, two-by-two committee. And, um, I, I'd really like to issue this apology, especially because right now there are some really hot topic issues, uh, that we absolutely need to discuss and to collaborate with our city partners on. And so, um, canceling the meeting today just, um, was really unfortunate because we need to take care of those items. We need to address those items. And we, as leaders, need to be able to, um, make comments on those items, um, and collaborate to help the district move forward. However, it is the utmost priority that we always remain in compliance. And so we needed to cancel the meeting because of that. And so, uh, my apologies, the district's apologies, the city's apologies, uh, for that, but we will absolutely, uh, find another time to, uh, have that meeting. And I'd like to thank, um, Jessica, who will work, uh, with the city to find another time so that, uh, Director Shinoski and myself will be available, as well as, um, our, uh, city council, uh, partners. Additionally, um, Nomad, I'd like to thank you for the acknowledgement tonight of our officer presence, um, around a lot of our campuses. Um, it was really because of the collaborative work, uh, with ourselves, our city partners, as well as, um, our Berkeley Police Department under the leadership of, uh, Chief Jennifer Lewis, that we were able to make those important shifts, especially, um, in the face of, uh, safety needs for our community. And so it is really great to hear back from the community that, that, um, the work that we've done, uh, is acknowledged and it's seen, um, and that their presence is felt and received in a great way, um, to make sure that all of our students are safe. Uh, in addition to that, I'd like to invite all of the community, um, to a town hall meeting that will be held, uh, with the city, um, our city partners, the district, um, as well as the Berkeley Police, uh, Department in regards to these safety concerns that are ongoing, um, around our school district, um, around our, around our city, rather, uh, but involving our students in our school district. Um, so as of right now, it is scheduled for February twenty-sixth, but there will be more information that will come in regards to time and location. So please be on the lookout on our BUSD website for that information. And finally, um, Happy Black History Month again, everyone. Uh, Black History Month is a time to celebrate the many accomplishments of Black and African-American people and recognize their central role in history, both here in the United States and throughout the world. And while Black History, uh, is the, or while February, rather, is the month that we celebrate, we know that Black History is much, much more than a once-per-year event. In fact, it should, yeah, clap it up. It is. It is absolutely more than, um, a once-per-year event. And here in BUSD, we strive to honor the contributions of Black and African-American people through culturally relevant and responsive teaching, through learning, and through activities in our schools for the benefit of all of our students, as well as the education of all of our staff and our faculty and the greater Berkeley community. This Black History Month, I encourage each and every one of you to educate yourselves and immerse yourselves in the richness of Black History, committing to learning about a new figure or event, uh, in Black History every day of not just this month, but really committing to doing that for the rest of the year and for the years to come. So again, I want to thank YGB for their wonderful educational opportunity this evening, uh, for all of the things that they're doing in the community. And I want to take the time to celebrate all of our strong, powerful, and excellent Black and African-American people in Berkeley Unified School District and the, uh, city of Berkeley, as well as all of our amazing heroes and sheros who are making Black History every single day. Uh, this concludes my comments, and I will now turn it over to Director Shinoski, who looks like she is ready.
I'm, I'm ready. Um, first, I, I want to thank, um, Vicky and PNO for coming out. Um, that was the first committee that I was assigned to as a board member, and I learned so much on that committee and was always so impressed with how much time people spent preparing for the meeting, um, and really coming just with an amazing amount of expertise and knowledge. Um, so while I'm no longer on that committee as a board member, um, I'm happy to go back on anytime. And I really remain super grateful, um, for your service, Vicky, on so, that, and so many committees, and also Nicole and Weldon and everybody else on the PNO. So thank you so much. And thank you again and again to the voters of Berkeley for making sure that we can do things that some of our neighboring districts are unable to do because California does not fully fund a public education. Um, I'll get off my soapbox now and move on. Um, so a common complaint that we get as board members, and I believe administrators as well, um, is a lack of communication from the district. So we get a lot of complaints from parents and community members who often feel blindsided about decisions that are being made, that the district has really engaged in many conversations about and had meetings about, um, robust meetings. So it's always a little shocking to us that there's, you know, that there's this feeling of being blindsided. So, um, I know it is a challenge, and I know that I share with my board colleagues a feeling that we can all do better. So with that, in that spirit, I'm going to try and do better, um, by previewing some upcoming meetings, as well as reviewing meetings that I've attended in the past during my board comments. So, coming up, um, we, um, have a Longfellow PTA meeting next Tuesday. Um, it's Tuesday evening. Um, I'll be in attendance along with the superintendent. Um, and at that meeting, we're hoping to talk a little bit about the workforce housing construction, as well as updates on the construction at, um, Longfellow that are progressing right along. Um, I just got a head shake, so maybe I'm not quite right about that, but we'll be there. Um, and as a member of the Facilities Committee, I am happy to share what I know about updates, um, regarding those items. Um, next Thursday, February twenty-sixth, at five-thirty PM, Councilmember Igor Trigub will be holding a community town hall um, that will be focused on, um, on issues, including the encampment, um, at Civic Center Park. So I encourage folks, um, to attend um, and hear more about, um, the items that President Brown, uh, discussed with, uh, associated with safety. Um, there's an Audit Committee meeting on March fourth at three-thirty PM. So we'll be looking at, um, at the district finances, which, again, with looming budget cuts, um, are, are more important than ever. And a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee meeting, again, on March fourth, uh, later that evening at six PM. Um, we also, I want to make it clear, um, there was some concern, um, from neighbors around Mollering Field that the district has moved forward on things without a sufficient community input. Um, the district actually has not moved forward since our last community meeting, um, but we do want to acknowledge the concerns of neighbors. And we are going to be scheduling, um, another community meeting in the coming weeks. Um, and a date will be confirmed in the next couple of days and announced in the next couple of days. And finally, I want to end with a huge congratulations to our very own President Khadijah Brown, who announced recently that she's expecting her first baby in August. So I don't believe in astrology, but I do know that Leos are the best. So I can't wait to hold your little Leo. Um, and I really wish you a smooth pregnancy, as smooth, as smooth as possible, an easy birth, and, um, all the joys and pains of parenthood. Um, it is truly the greatest privilege of my life to be a mother. And so I'm excited you get to have that privilege too. So congratulations. I'm done now.
I had to take a second because Jennifer's going to make me cry up here. Oh. All right, educators don't cry. We changed the world. I'm not going to cry right now. And I'll just go ahead and go to Mike. Mike, are you ready?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, of course, congratulations, President Brown. We were so pleased when we learned and, um, very excited to meet Mini, Mini Khadijah. Um, so, uh, I'm going to try to keep this short, as short as possible. Thank you, everyone, for speaking your hearts and minds, as, as always. Um, welcome Evelyn Velasquez. It's great to have you here. Um, and, uh, Superintendent, get plenty of rest. I find that, uh, chicken soup helps and ginseng. And I just want to make a, um, quick comment about current events, and I'll get off my soapbox very quickly. And this relates to, um, what some public commentators had added, and I'm sure there's a lot of anxiety and concern across the district. Um, and it's related to our agenda discussion item. I would like to reflect that ethnic studies is a critical foundation for the American value of fairness and just giving everyone a fair shake. Um, I strongly believe that as someone who enforces anti-discrimination laws equally, that, um, the concepts behind ethnic studies, which ground diversity, equity, and inclusion, are also absolutely critical to American values in fairness and giving everyone a fair shake. I know that at BUSD, we are not going to be rolling back on fairness and giving, giving everyone a fair shake. So let's show them what we mean by Berkeley values.
Thank you, Director Chang. Um, Student Director Clark, are you ready? Okay.
Hey, good evening, everybody, um, and Happy Black History Month. I'll keep my comments short and sweet, but first I'd like to extend a warm welcome to Student Director Evelyn Velasquez, um, the new school board representative for BTEC. I'm really excited to work alongside you and see the impact you'll make in this role. Um, I also wanted to take a moment to recognize the incredible student staff and educators who continue to uplift Black voices in our community. The performance tonight from, um, YGB was absolutely beautiful and such a powerful reminder of how art can celebrate culture and inspire change. Black is indeed beautiful and powerful, and it's more like these that show the importance of honoring Black History, not just this month, but every month. And for those looking to further support these efforts, I encourage you to visit the African-American Studies Department website and the Berkeley High BSU Instagram page, where you'll find information about upcoming fundraisers and events. And it's a great way to stay engaged and show your support. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Director Clark. Student Director Velasquez, are you ready? Okay.
Hello, my name is Evan Velasquez. I am currently a senior at BTA. I feel compelled to bring attention to several important issues that's affecting the daily experience of students, teachers, and staffs at BTA. These concerns range from conditions of our physical education facility and heating issues within classrooms, to the quality of our food service and the cafeteria, and our school overall funding and security. These are critical matters that require immediate attention. Addressing these issues will help ensure a safer, more comfortable, and productive learning environment for everyone at BTA. I have more topics I would like to include. These would be further discussed at further meetings. Thank you for having me today.
And thank you as well for your comments. And, uh, finally, Director Vasude.
Thanks, President Brown. Um, just joining my colleagues and congratulating you and want to echo all their positive sentiments for you the next couple of months. And, um, also wanted to thank everyone who came out here for public comment tonight. Thank our amazing YGB students who came and joined us in celebration of Black History Month. And as, uh, Director Chang alluded to, our diversity as a district is definitely what makes us stronger. And so we are not going to shy away from our values and making sure that all our students feel a sense of belonging in our schools. I want to thank the community members who came out to speak about the tennis team and who, uh, hopefully watched, uh, the last board meeting and heard my comments about that. And also, um, all of the advocates who called in support of the Bridge Program. It's great to hear from families how important that program is for their students. I also want to thank, uh, the Longfellow community who came to talk about pedestrian safety issues at the school. Um, I have updated, uh, Superintendent Ford Marthell and Principal Mitchell, but now that, um, that was brought up, I want to make sure the community knows that I have reached out to Alameda County's Transportation Commission to request an updated school safety assessment for Longfellow. The last assessment by the county and Safe Out to School was done in twenty-eighteen, so it's, we're super overdue for one. And, um, just for folks who don't know what that is, safety assessment is where you have folks from the county, city staff, school district staff, parents, um, Safe Roots to Schools advocates, all kind of walking together near a school, observing the traffic patterns and coming up with ways, uh, to improve pedestrian and bicycle safety near our school. And so hopefully, we can get that scheduled soon. Um, I know that the Superintendent and Principal Mitchell should be following up with the county shortly so we can all get on the same page of what needs to be done to address safety at Longfellow, who's going to do it, and come up with a concrete plan, um, to make sure that our students feel safe getting to school. We've received numerous emails expressing safety concerns about the encampment across BHS. Um, and I just want to let the community know that I really do share your sense of urgency for addressing this. I spoke to Councilmember Trigub today, got a, just got an update of kind of where his office was in addressing this. And he reiterated, he reiterated his support for BHS students and their families, that he wants to address the issue promptly. And, um, as my colleague shared, there is a meeting coming up on the twenty-sixth from five-thirty to seven. Um, Councilmember Trigub wanted me to pass, pass along that it could take place either at the North Berkeley Senior Center or BCC to please email his office tomorrow to get confirmation of the exact location. Feel free to reach out to me, too, and we'll make sure that you know the location as soon as I know it. There's also a very important meeting tomorrow for the Sanctuary City Task Force that's being led by Mayor Ishi. So just grateful to her and to her staff for inviting representatives from the school district there to make sure that we're working together in protecting our undocumented community members. Our students don't live in isolation. They're part of the broader city. And so we want to make sure that whether they're on our campuses or in after-school programs, that our students and their families are protected. So I'll be taking part in that. And tomorrow, I'll also be at BHS to cheer on our English learners as they prepare for the LPAC. I know that our, um, Associate Superintendent Hopkins will also be there. So it'll be exciting to see our English language learners prepare for this important milestone. I hope to see many folks this weekend on the twenty-second at, to, um, to attend this really important event at BCC Caminos a la Universidad. It's a college readiness fair for middle schoolers and high schoolers that's taking place at nine- readiness fair for middle schoolers and high schoolers that's taking place at 9:30 at BCC. So I'll be there, as well as some of our families from Latinos and Milos of Berkeley, some of our middle school Raza Clubs and affinity group club members, and our high school students will also be there. So I'm excited about that. And with that, I'll conclude my statements.
Thank you for your comments, Director Vasudev. And thank you, Board members, for all of your comments. At this time, we need to approve our consent calendar. There were no corrections to the consent calendar this evening. So is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Moved by Director Shunovsky. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Chang. All those in favor, please signify with the sign of I. Opposing have the same sign. Abstentions, the I's have it, the motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved this evening. We have three discussion items tonight, you all. And it will be a pretty, pretty long night, but I'm really excited about these items because they are really, really important and information that the that the district needs to hear important updates on. And so you'll see that we have our first discussion item tonight, which will be on our local control and accountability plan, our midyear update. So as you all know, we are governed by our LCAP plan that every single school district comes up with. And I'd like to say that our LCAP plan is probably one of the best, the best around. So we'll get to hear an update on that. And then followed by that, we'll hear a midyear academic update, data update. And just to make the board and the public aware, that update will really fall under Goals 1 and 2 of the LCAP plan. And so we'll take some time to kind of, we'll receive each of the presentations separately, but understanding that there is going to be some overlapping information between the two of them. And so you may hear some of the same things twice. And it'll just be another opportunity for you to go ahead and put that information in your brain. So at this time, I will introduce our Assistant Superintendent Jill Hogan-Dyke, who will begin our presentation this evening. Please welcome her.
All right. Good evening, Board of Education. Again, extending well wishes to our Superintendent for a speedy recovery. I'm also extending well wishes for a speedy recovery to Ms. Lena Sweeney, who is joining us online even though she is under the weather. So we will share this, the content of this presentation. I do agree with President Brown. We have one of the best LCAPs. So I just want to acknowledge the work of the PAC and the DLEC and staff and our other advisory committees for all of their inputs last spring to get us to this point. As President Brown said, this evening, our Ed Services team has prepared three consecutive presentations. We really are looking at this as three chapters in our teaching and learning story, beginning with this presentation, which will highlight an overview of our district's progress through the lens of the California Dashboard and the LCAP. Chapter 2 will be our midyear update presentation. This will be a dive specifically into LCAP Goals 1 and 2 and our formative data in from our DIBBLES and STAR assessments. And finally, our third presentation for this evening will serve as Chapter 3, and it will be a look at our curriculum adoption process. In other words, the materials that we use to support teaching and learning. So for Chapter 1, we're going to start with an overview of the California Dashboard and our LCAP midyear report. We are presenting the LCAP midyear report because this is now required by law that we, on or before February 28th, present any of all available midyear outcome data and all available midyear expenditure data. So we're looking at midyear from a point in time of mostly December 31st. As a reminder for folks at home and in the audience, our LCAP is a three year plan that tells a story about the services and supports that we are, we are performing in BUSD to meet the needs of our students and our unduplicated students in particular. Our unduplicated students are students who qualify for free and reduced price lunch, our English learners, and our foster youth. Last year, as part of that spring development and the initiation of our three year LCAP plan for 2427, we have five LCAP goals. And we are working to align those LCAP goals with our emerging strategic plan. So you see here Goal 1, which is really focused on high quality Tier 1 instruction, and Goal 2, which is around the timely interventions and supports for students, are in the bucket or pillar that we are calling Academic Excellence and Equitable Outcomes. The second presentation or Chapter 2 tonight is really going to focus on those two goals. Chapter 3 for Wellness and Belonging and Chapter 4 Partnership and Engagement, you'll see some of those metrics in our appendix and in the other documents that are on the board agenda. And we will be presenting more information about our actions and measures for Goals 3 and 4 in a presentation to the board in March. Goal 5 is specific to the Berkeley Technology Academy as our only equity multiplier school in the district. And this just is a slide to provide that visual of alignment between the LCAP goals that you see there on the left and our strategic plan pillars on the right. Again, we've talked before about the number of plans and initiatives that we have in the district. Across those plans, we have something along the lines of 141 actions. And so we're really working to align and streamline those things because it would be really challenging for us to track those individually. But looking at them in the context of these goals helps to provide some of that context and alignment. The BUSD strategic plan is still under development, and LCAP is a continuous process. So we are here at the midyear point, but we are moving into budget development season. So you'll be hearing more about LCAP budget development as we move through the spring. And then we will be coming to you in June with the recommendations for the 2526 school year. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lena Sweeney, who's going to give us a quick overview about the 2024 California Dashboard. And Lena, just let me know when you want to advance the slides.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening, Board of Directors, BUSD staff and community members. It is an honor and a privilege to present to you tonight. As Jill mentioned, I am unfortunately quite unwell tonight, so I present from this virtual platform. I'm also accompanied here by two team members, Colleen Renick, Brea TSA, Teacher on Special Assignment, and also here tonight for our subsequent presentation is Rebecca, also a Brea TSA. So I'm honored to have them here as well. On this slide, we turn our attention to our California State Dashboard data. Data on the dashboard is represented by dashboard indicators, with red representing the lowest performance range, moving to blue representing the highest performance band. Next slide, please. The California State Dashboard is important for key reasons. Transparency and accountability, and a centralized and publicly accessible platform. It consolidates important data points and identifies student groups that may need extra support, while also highlighting our eight state priorities, including basic necessities, implementation of state standards, access to courses, student achievement, student engagement, parental involvement, student climate, and other student outcomes. Next slide, please. So what is new or different for 2024? The state's dashboard continues in its development. In 2000, excuse me, in 2024, the dashboard added the Science CAST Assessment in the form of informational purposes only for now. Access to the LCAP, inclusion of LTALs, or Long Term English Language Learners, updated differentiated assistance information, as well as returning five by five charts for the college and career indicator. Next slide, please. Okay. As you can see here, overall, our district has five green, the second highest level indicators, and two yellow indicators on the 2024 state dashboard. This is an improvement from 2023, when we had an orange rating on the English Language Progress Indicator, students making at least a year's growth, and chronic absenteeism indicators. Next slide. Okay. For English Language Arts, we made 2.3 points of growth from 2023 overall. Our ELA indicator would have been blue if our distance from standard were 6.5 points higher. So we aim for that. All right, next slide, please. In mathematics, we were 15.8 points above standard overall, with a slight decrease from the year prior. We would have reached the blue level for this indicator if we had been 16.3 points higher. And next slide. Okay. So I'm excited to present this. We are pleased to share a new aspect of the California State Dashboard, and that's our growth level data. So I'll try to be brief. There's a lot here. So the release in January 2025, there was a release of aggregate LEA, School and Student Group Growth Score Data for English Language Arts and Mathematics, using 2022, 2023, and 2024 results on the California 2024 Dashboard. California Student Growth Model Methodology uses statewide California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress Results from students in grades four through eight in both ELA and Mathematics. These individual scores are averaged for students across the district, at the district, excuse me, school and student group levels, using either a simple average when there are large enough numbers of students, or a weighted average when there are small numbers of students. Overall, and importantly, our students made eight points above typical growth in English Language Arts, according to this growth metric. Next slide. Okay. When analyzing growth data by subgroup, we highlight that our LTALs, Long Term English Language Learners, our Black African American students, and our students with disabilities made below typical growth in ELA. Our other focal groups, English Language Learners, students experiencing homelessness, students economically disadvantaged, and our Hispanic Latinx students made typical growth. Three groups of our students do not have growth data due to their small overall numbers. Next slide, please. I am quite pleased to present this data. Our students overall in Mathematics made above typical growth with 15 points over typical. Next slide, please. We had no students in Mathematics who showed below growth. Three of our focal groups made typical growth, while the remainder of our students and students in focal groups made above average growth, according to this California State Dashboard calculation. Next slide. Okay. So differentiated assistance refers to the state system of providing targeted support and intervention in the case that we have struggled to meet certain criteria. Currently, Berkeley Unified School District is in differentiated assistance under LCAP 4, 5, and 8 for our students experiencing homelessness, and LCAP Priority 4 and 5 for our students with IEPs, our students with disabilities. Next slide. And we'll turn that back over to you, Jill.
All right. So for the LCAP midyear update, just want to make sure the public knows and the board is aware that we have a lot of information in the appendix. So we're going to give some highlights here, but there are additional details with lots of different slides in the appendix. So an overview on our midyear expenditures, just as a reminder, we have about $116 million of LCFF funding, about 5.86 million of that is our supplemental funding that is to be used to target services and supports, increased and improved services and supports for our unduplicated students. As of December 31st, we are about halfway through the spending. And you see here an overview of the breakdown of that spending by each goal. So overall, we have spent about $6.5 million of the $15.5 million called out on actions on the LCAP, which is about at the halfway point, pretty much to be expected. Most of the expenditures that we've articulated on the LCAP involve staffing. So we're at the halfway point. We've paid out half of the salary. So we are on track for our expenditures for this school year. As far as the midyear metrics, we had introduced as part of our spring presentations to the board and our 2425 LCAP rollout, a new metrics document so that for each of our individual measures, we have an appendix in the LCAP that also includes all of our focal groups. Remember, we've got the three by five goal for this year. So what you will see in an attachment to this board agenda item, and was shared with the board, the turquoise column in our metrics document has been updated with all available midyear data. In some cases, as is true for the CASP data here, these are data from the Spring Administration of the CASP Assessment. Other data points are more recent, like the STAR and DIBBLES Winter Assessment. So those have all been updated. What you'll find in the appendix is a breakdown of the overall metrics for each of the goal areas in the LCAP. And this is an example here of Goal 1. Okay. And then for next steps, we have launched the annual planning survey. As of about 3 o'clock today, 590 participants have completed that survey. Last year, we had 1,200. So we are at the halfway halfway point of meeting last year's numbers. We are conducting our PAC meetings. They will be collecting information from SSCs and ELACs at their sites. We are going to work to update the LCAP plan based on these inputs. And we'll be gathering recommendations from both PAC and DLEC that will be presented to the board. We will continue to monitor implementation of the budget. And we are having ongoing meetings with the Alameda County Office of Education. And most specifically, they will be working directly with us related to analyzing additional data toward that differentiation, differentiated assistance subgroups. We will have tonight a data presentation to the board on LCAP Goals 1 and 2. And in March, we'll circle back with Goals 3 and 4. And key dates on LCAP development, we will have the public meeting on June 4th and look for approval of the 2526 LCAP on June 18th. This is just a budget time and LCAP timeline for folks to reference. And then finally, since we do have members of the audience here, this is the link to the annual survey. So we can leave this slide up as we take questions from the board.
Board of Education, if the majority of your questions are around academic data, which I'm sure they are because I know us, do we want to receive the midyear academic data update and then ask questions then? What is your pleasure?
Sure, go right ahead.
Will you be talking about the chronic absenteeism later? Or should I ask about that now?
You can ask about that now, but we will be coming back to the board with a presentation on LCAP Goal 3 and 4, and we'll be looking more closely at the chronic absenteeism suspension data then.
Then I can hold it. And that's fine. We can wait.
Unless you want to ask your question now about chronic absenteeism, because then that could also help shape the information that they provide.
And then I'm also going to look to Liz. I think Dr. Shelley was online. Has he been promoted? Just in case he might have some of the details.
Super. Well, maybe I'll just change it to a comment. So
So, um, I know that chronic absenteeism is one of our areas, um, where we need growth. And I also know that our, um, attendance rate is something around 94% now, much lower than it was prior to COVID, and that every 1% in attendance, um, translates to about a million dollars into our general fund. So, um, I would really like to know what kind of concrete steps we're taking, um, to really look at attendance proactively. One, as sort of our bottom line, it really impacts our bottom line. And two, because we know that kids that are not going to school are not, um, as successful. So, uh, that's my comment, maybe for next time, thanks.
All right, at this time, we will, uh, receive our mid-year academic data update, uh, which is just pretty much a continuation, um, of this presentation. And so at the, uh, culmination or at the end of that presentation, then I'm sure we will have more, um, data questions. And so we are ready to receive it now.
All right, thank you, okay. We've got Director Albeck will be coming, and again, uh, we've got Lena Sweeney online alongside of, uh, Ms. Colleen and Ms. Rebecca, who is here in the audience, welcome.
Okay. Oh, Liz, we need to switch up the presentations, although I do like the QR code. But we can get started while she's talking because we always start with our mission, and we don't need the slide to say that by heart. Um, as we come into this space, we want to remind ourselves that our mission in BUSD is to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. Um, and that ex- academic excellence is important and totally aligned to LCAP Goals One and Two. Um, and so for tonight's presentation, um, we are going to be reviewing highlights uh, of BUSD's mid-year data by grade span, and we are doing things a little bit differently tonight because we're going to be highlighting some instructional strategies and systemic shifts that we have made in our practice based on our BUSD theory of improvement and change. Some of the data sets that we're going to be looking at tonight, um, are our reading DIBELS and STAR data for students in grades K through 10, and our math data for students in grades 2 through 10. So again, um, for mem- for the board and members of the audience, um, we have, all of our data sets are in the appendix, but what we're doing for tonight's presentation is pulling some samples related to some of the strategic actions that we have been taking as a district. That's the LCAP one. Uh, BOE mid-year, it's the one, it's, it should be in your chat. But I'll just describe the data sets. So we have our overall data sets, um, which is by grade span, clustered by grade span, and then we also have data sets by ethnicity and by program. Um, so related to the previous presentation, we are, um, honing in on Goal, LCAP Goals One and Two, which are directly related to our academic excellence and equitable outcomes for all pillar in our strategic plan. We do want to remind the board and our audience that we are operating, um, from a framework. Um, these, uh, items on the left are key insights for organizational excellence. We know that ideal results require ideal behaviors. Um, and in that context, um, we are working on the delivery of our Tier One instruction and some of the actions that we have around aligned PD and coaching, which has been a significant investment on the part of our district and on the part of our teachers, our school-based specialists and our site leaders. Um, and then we are building, we are building muscles, as you heard in our Literacy Action Plan Report from our monitor, Mr. George Ellis, um, we have been, um, building our routines around observation and feedback. Um, in order to do this work, purpose and system drive behavior, um, we need to be a data-informed system, and we have been working to articulate an MTSS framework and mindsets, um, informed behaviors, and that is our work around continuous improvement. Um, our continuous improvement focuses on three questions. So as we do our work in the classroom, at a school site, and in the district, we are really asking ourselves, what is it that we're trying to improve? What are the changes or actions that we might make and why? And then how do we know that change led to improvement? And when we are looking at the how do we know that change led to improvement, we're looking at both the outcome measures, um, that we see in our student data. And as a reminder, we've got a three-by-five goal for this school year or through the course of our three-year LCAP, 3% growth annually for all students with an accelerated growth target of 5% for our focal student groups. But we're also looking at, um, how are we looking, um, how are we measuring and understanding the implementation data? So if we're providing PD, do we know that those actions are translating into the classroom? So we're going to be talking about, um, some of those actions in this presentation today. So with that, I'm going to turn it, we're going to start with EL, uh, English Language Arts, and Director Albeck is going to give us an overview about some of those actions.
Thank you, uh, good evening, Board of Education. So we'll start with English Language Arts, I'm happy to be here. So at the heart of our work in English Language Arts is our instructional vision that literacy is a fundamental right, human right, and empowers individuals to engage meaningfully in civic life, challenge inequities, and shape their own destinies. We commit all, uh, to providing a rigorous, research-aligned literacy instruction to all grades so that all students can build their own literacy skills to make positive contributions to the world. Uh, that part, that literacy vision is newly minted, uh, as part of our Curriculum Adoption Committee, which you'll be hearing a little bit about later. Um, but as we go about examining our mid-year literacy data, we see growth across grade spans with increases in reading proficiency among many student groups. However, our data also tells us that not all students are progressing at the same rate, and we must continue to refine our instructional approaches to close these persistent gaps that we continue to see. Um, so building off of what we shared with you all in October, um, our focus areas and our key strategies for this year have remained the same. So this is an opportunity to provide you a reminder of what those key strategies are and also an update on what has happened between October and now in February. So this year, we have anchored our literacy improvement work around three key strategies. First, we are focused on building the capacity of our educators. Uh, literacy instruction is complex, and effective teaching requires continuous learning and refinements. To support this, we have invested in professional development, coaching, and collaborative learning structures that help educators implement research-based practices with consistency and fidelity. So the picture on the left-hand side, um, whether we see structured literacy training for instructional assistance or coaching cycles with site-based literacy leaders, we are ensuring that every adult working with students has the knowledge and tools to accelerate literacy growth that goes beyond just our classroom teachers, uh, that includes our paraprofessionals and other educators that work with our students daily, ensuring that they are also using their research-backed and evidence-proven strategies that we are looking to see in our classrooms. Um, second, we have strengthened our assessment and progress monitoring infrastructure. You all have heard a lot about this, I've heard a lot about Educlima and, um, progress monitoring. And, uh, the slide that you see in the middle, it should be, um, fairly relevant, or reminder, is our new diagnostic plan. So this is, uh, showing that data is a powerful tool in literacy instruction to help us understand where students are, what they need, and how to best support them. This year, we have refined our district-wide literacy diagnostic plan, ensuring that DIBELS and STAR assessments are used consistently, not just, uh, three times a year, but also to monitor progress regularly in two-to-three-week increments to inform instruction and also to guide intervention in small group instruction. We recognize that there are students in our classrooms that have gaps, and if we're not providing that small group instruction in Tier One in the general education classroom environment, then we're relying on our students to be intervened to proficiency, which we know has, uh, a significant amount of resources, and there's an inclusion, um, and I would say, um, um, belonging element that that, um, presents its challenges. Um, and finally, our last, uh, focus area for literacy this year is attending to curriculum resources to ensure that all students have access to high-quality, rigorous, and engaging literacy instruction. The picture on the right you see is a lab classroom, which we'll talk a little bit later about our, our, our curriculum adoption. But as we talk about this in our next presentation, much progress has been made around our K5 Language Arts adoption, and we look very forward to bringing a curriculum recommendation to you all in early spring.
Thank you, Director Albeck. So this slide highlights the role of progress monitoring as an integral aspect of continuous improvement and continuous learning cycles. As Berkeley moves to accelerating growth by 3% for all students and 5% for target populations, teachers and staff at Tiers One, Tiers Two, and Tier Three have worked on setting clear goals and administering systematic assessments. We highlight here in this presentation the STAR assessment as well as the DIBELS Oral Reading Fluency Measure as a progress monitoring tool to assess phonological awareness, fluency, and comprehension. Next slide, please. STAR reading grade fall to winter progress. This data represents our students overall in grades six through eight, reflecting a match cohort scores on the STAR reading screener assessment from fall 2024 to winter 2025. We see an increase in our students at benchmark and a slight decrease in our students at the urgent intervention levels. We highlight here both our progress in decreasing the number of students in, in need of urgent intervention, and we call out and name simultaneously the work that remains for our students in the high percentage of our children who continue to require urgent intervention based on this metric. Next slide, please. So I'm, I'm very excited to be able to present and highlight some of the work that our teachers are doing. We move here to looking at some of the work happening with regular assessment and progress monitoring, looking at our students overall as related to our three-by-five target, but here specifically highlighting our students with disabilities at the sixth through eighth grade level. Our practitioner highlighted here, Susannah Bell, is a Tier Three Interventionist. In an interview I conducted with her, Susannah reflected that the systematic use of DIBELS has impacted her work in the way she uses consistent data to adjust instruction in response to the DIBELS Oral Reading Fluency Measure. And this enables her to provide valid and timely feedback to her students. Next slide. So here, connected. This slide provides an example of what our Educlima internal data tool looks like based on progress monitoring in Educlima using oral reading fluency probes. This slide here depicts a student with an IEP's benchmark scores as represented in the small little black squares, as well as their progress monitoring data trend, which is represented, each progress monitoring probe is represented by, um, a separate blue, um, circle. And I'm happy to talk more about it if there's questions. The orange dots represent student accuracy. So this is actually a screenshot of a student on Susannah Bell's caseload, um, demonstrating the work that she's doing with progress monitoring. So very pleased to be able to present that. Um, next slide, please. Okay, so we now move to highlight our elementary intervention work and progress on the fall to winter STAR grades three through five. STAR, as, as many or most of you may know, is a screener used in grades now, grades three through 10th grade. And we'll talk a little more about that later. Overall, we had a slight increase in the number of students who scored in proficient bands. And when viewing our reading three, third through five, excuse me, through, through, third through fifth grade, fall to winter progress by race and ethnicity, grounding in our three-by-five target, we note the decrease for our Black African American and Hispanic Latinx students in need of urgent intervention while simultaneously recognize the unfinished learning we see represented. Next slide, please. Moving here, we highlight Matilde, a Tier Two Interventionist, a literacy interventionist at Rosa Parks Elementary School. Our Tier Two Literacy Specialist Coaches and Interventionists differentiate their instruction to intervene more effectively. Next slide, please. So this slide depicts a progress monitoring chart for one of our students, also representing a student in a focal group in one of Matilde's literacy groups. Again, we see here the internal use of Educlima as part of our MTSS implementation and an example of a visual that practitioners use to determine the efficacy of their intervention in order to make database decisions. Okay, next slide. So this slide demonstrates our STAR reading scores. STAR is, and I think we highlight this in, in a few more slides, but, um, this is the first year that we have implemented the STAR assessment at grades nine and 10, um, holistically. So this demonstrates our overall, um, progress from fall to winter on the STAR reading test as well as by program. So moving here from ninth to 10th grade overall and by program, we, we focus on the Tier Three Intervention Work at the high school level. Rachel, a special education teacher at Berkeley High School, is using Orton-Gillingham Structured Literacy Intervention to support literacy as represented in this photo for all of our students, including our focal students. So we're really excited about this progress.
So we're going to shift gears and start talking about math, one of my favorites. I love them all, but particularly, um, love math. So in BUSD, you recognize that math is more than just numbers and computation, as any good math teacher would say. Uh, it's about building thinkers, problem solvers, and confident learners. Uh, as we review our mid-year math data, we see positive momentum and increases in proficiency rates across grade spans. However, similar to ELA, we also recognize that some student groups continue to face persistent challenges, highlighting the need for comprehensive and aligned approach to instruction and intervention, which I feel very positively about, that we're making those headways as it relates to math. Next slide, please. So returning to the three, uh, change actions that we are focusing on this year that were again shared with you in October and providing updates on those. Um, so to ensure that all students receive a high-quality math education that they deserve, we have focused this year on these three areas of improvement. First, as a reminder, we launched the Meeting of Math Minds and Cubed, for those of you that are math savvy, a district-wide math initiative that brings together teachers, families, and administrators every single month to shape our instructional priorities. Through this work, we are tapping into the expertise of our district, but also tapping into expertise that goes beyond our district and into our community. So on the picture on the left, you see the Silicon Valley Math Initiative coming to work with us, uh, as it relates to the new California math framework and doing some professional learning around that. Um, this partnership is helping us clear, uh, establish a clear vision for math instruction that is both rigorous and equitable, that we look forward to bringing to you all at the end of this school year. Uh, second, we have strengthened our collaboration and professional learning for elementary teachers. Across all BUSD elementary schools, we have implemented structured, site-based math professional development designed to build teacher capacity and improve instruction. These sessions provide teachers with tools and strategies they need to foster deep mathematical understanding among students, ensuring that foundational skills are strong and enduring. And I think the key component here that stands out for me is this hap- is happening across all 11 elementary schools, whereas previously, math PD was happening in different silos depending on a school leader, I would say, expertise and, uh, personal initiative. Uh, but finally, we have focused on aligning our Tier One instruction with targeted interventions to ensuring that all students receive the support that they need. Uh, this year, we introduced Math 180 at the secondary level as a systematic intervention program that has helped us better address gaps in student learning, providing structured data-informed support to those who need it the most. Um, last thing that I would say is that these efforts are more, are more than just about raising test scores. Uh, they're about building a culture of mathematical confidence and success for all of our BUSD students.
Thank you, Director. So on this slide, we, we observe our So on this slide, we observe our third through fifth grade mathematics fall to winter progress. Following our three by five target, we observe a three percent increase from fall to winter, although lower proficiency rates for focal groups signal continual need for targeted instruction. Next slide, please. Here we highlight Tracy Eagleheart at the tier one level. There is an emphasis on tier one interventions, universal assessments, and progress monitoring. Here we highlight Tracy Eagleheart's elementary tier one interventions in math. She emphasizes the power of using assessments for determining student need for re-engagement and reteaching at the tier one level, importantly. Thank you. On this slide, we observe our math, our STAR math overall fall to winter scores adjacent to our slide representing our racial and ethnic groups. We see a slight increase from fall, and most subgroups showed progress as well, although again, lower proficiency rates signal a continued need for targeted instruction and accelerated learning. Here we emphasize at the middle school level, the work being done at the sixth through eighth tier one level, as well as the tier two level in mathematics. We highlight here Ms. Juliana Jones. She shares that her work using the intervention program, Math 180, that Director Albeck referenced. Importantly, she shares that having these systems aligned with curriculum is incredibly exciting in an interview with her. Thank you. So again, here we lift up the regular assessments and continuity now in BUSD using the STAR assessment in grades two through 10, creating longitudinal data analysis opportunities, as well as aligning with the foundational aspect of MTSS through regular and aligned assessments and assessment cycles.
Okay, and as we round out this presentation, we hope that what you have seen through this context is that we're really trying to connect the academic results that we're seeing with some of the actions and significant shifts that we've been making to to really strengthen our instructional system, whether that's through professional development, whether that's through aligned coaching and feedback, whether that's time with our site-based intervention specialists, how we're looking at the curriculum that we're implementing, delivering, and thinking about adopting. These are all components of developing a strong instructional system. So as we head into the remainder of this year and look ahead to next year, we are going to be bringing K-5 curriculum adoption recommendations specifically for our literacy curriculum. That will come to the board there. You see the key dates on the right-hand side, the March 19th board meeting. We will continue the work of the math initiative in M3, and we'll be drafting an instructional framework and district-wide vision for mathematics, which will situate us for looking at math curriculum in the next school year. We will continue our focus on improving our coaching and feedback cycles. We have been conducting instructional rounds with principals, and that will continue. And we are looking at some shifts for our literacy coaches, moving from spending a large amount of their time on intervention into more coaching and feedback, particularly as we're looking at implementing a new curriculum in the elementary schools next year. We will continue to build our assessment and progress monitoring routines, and you should look forward to a March board meeting update on goals, L-Cup goals three and four, wellness and belonging, parent engagement, when we turn our attention to next month. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you all very much for your presentations. I have lots of questions. Going to be gracious, I'll let my board colleagues go first. And Director Shunovsky, I see your hand. Director Vasudev, I think I saw your hand as well. So we'll go Director Vasudev, then Director Shunovsky, Director Chang, and then myself.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It was really informative to take a little bit of a deep dive into the math actions. And I was great to see the level of professional development that's happening in the TK to five age range. Thank you for going over that. I just had a question about the middle school, just like professional development at the middle school level. It's, you know, one of the things that stood out to me to think was really good is to see the number of students, the high number of students that are in the like above benchmark percentages, which is great. So congratulations to our staff for that. And the amount of students at the third to fifth grade level that are showing proficiency in the winter STAR math assessment. My question was about the middle school level and just kind of how professional development happens across all three middle schools. And if we're seeing, I know like at Berkeley High, we have, there's a lot of talk in the community about the advanced math program. Without entering too deeply into that, but if we're seeing a comparable percentage of students in the kind of, you know, advanced or above benchmark range, entering from all three middle schools at the ninth grade level, I'm just curious how the data kind of breaks down by middle school in terms of differentiation and how we're seeing the percentages of students at above benchmark. I could get that data later, too.
Are you asking specifically about the benchmark data from middle school moving into advanced placement? Because those numbers I'll have to get for you later.
Yeah, we could get them later on, or just if we see that the numbers kind of break down in a comparable way, the number of students that are above benchmark from all three middle schools when they enter ninth grade at Berkeley High.
So we can get you those numbers. I think it's important to know that the board is making updates on. Yasmina's here. There's a policy coming about the assessments and what that will look like for placement in the ninth grade. But we can, we can take a look at that comparison from, I think we're asking for eighth grade benchmark data into ninth grade math.
Should it be last year's data, right?
Yeah, last year's data.
Into ninth grade advanced math, I understood.
Yeah, so that would be looking, yeah, so spring 2023 into this year. Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll get it.
Yeah.
Director Shunovsky.
Okay, I have one comment and three questions. My comment is, I really loved the slide that you had early on about the continuous improvement loop. I think especially as we go into these budget cuts, really understanding what changes are having a true impact on our students is so important. So thank you for that. So we keep talking about EduClimber, and I got a little tutorial on EduClimber a year or two ago and thought it was great, but it was in its very baby steps of being used. And so we talk about it from time to time, but we haven't dug into that data much in this space. And I'm just, maybe we're not, we're still not, we're still building it out. I know that there was a lot of work that had to be done there. So I'm just wondering how we're using EduClimber data. Is it pretty robust? You know, and being used by educators to make decisions? Are we using it to make decisions? That's, that's my first question. I have two others, but they're totally different.
Yeah, I think I can start. EduClimber is built out, and practitioners at all different levels of the tiers, as well as leaders, are using EduClimber systematically. We have been going out as a team. I can speak specifically for the Brea team. We go out to all different groups in cycles, knowing that when people are learning new systems, they require multiple opportunities to know and practice those systems. So we are still working through encouraging even more use of EduClimber, but we've seen a very positive shift in using EduClimber at all different levels.
I think it's important to know that EduClimber isn't intended to be a public-facing dashboard. So we gave you a couple of snapshots in today's presentation for how we are using that, or how some of our site-based specialists in particular are using that data. And you do actually see some of the data because we pull in STAR and DIBELS into EduClimber. And we are using that data to make decisions about students who need more frequent progress monitoring. So while we are sharing our screening data, which we administer three times a year, students who are scoring below benchmark are being administered the ORF in the case of reading at least three times, but could also be weekly depending on the level of intervention. And so that information then helps our teachers or our literacy coaches or RTI TSAs be able to make decisions about whether or not the instructional delivery is meeting with the results that we want and what shifts might need to happen.
I wonder if though we're also using like, you know, we got some calls for Bridge in public comment today, right? Expanding the offerings of Bridge because people are on waitlist. But we should through EduClimber have some data about outcomes for kids that are participating in those types of programs. But those are not like the interventions that we talk about, like a tier one, tier two, tier three intervention. So most of the data that we have on some of those extra programs are anecdotal. You know, I mean, we get data, but it's not, it's not directly tied to the kinds of metrics we're looking at here. So I just, that's what I'm thinking about. Like, is there some way? And maybe we can come back to it later as I think about it more and flesh it out a little bit more. But I'm just thinking, we do have all these programs in addition to our classroom interventions. And I, we should have some kind of way to see how effective those programs are so that we can invest in the effective programs, right? Invest more and expand them, as we're also being called to do. Okay, to intervention, I learned a couple of years ago that kids that get into, you know, tier two and tier three interventions often spend their academic careers sort of stuck in those tier two and tier three interventions and don't always make it, you know, sort of back into the tier one. And we see the aggregated data, so we can sort of see overall how many students are above benchmark, at benchmark, and so on. But do we have data about, you know, how effective our tier two interventions are at moving students back into tier one instruction? Is that something that we have? Or have we looked at that at all? Because it seems like that would give us some sense of how effective those interventions are at what we want.
That is, I mean, so once we can tag toward the intervention. So what I will say is there's been, there's been an investment in our site-based specialists in particular for the Orton Gillingham training, which is a tier two intervention. We can now tag students who are in OG, but there are a number, we're still on a learning curve to some extent because teachers are learning the intervention, learning how to input data, learning how to progress monitor, all at the same time. So one of the things that we have been looking at this year are that for students who've been tagged for Orton Gillingham, how many times have they been progress monitored, right? Because what we're looking for is at least three or at least every three weeks or less, or more. Am I saying that right? So if you're a higher intensive student that's doing weekly, but at least every three weeks. So do we see that happening, right? So that gets back to ideal results require ideal behaviors, right? So we need to know, are we, have we trained people to implement the Orton Gillingham intervention? Are they entering that data? So it could be that they're progress monitoring, but then that data isn't entered. And then how are they using that data? So there are like three different types of learning curves that we're on now to be able to put that together. So it's probably too early to say, yes, this works and knows that works because we're trying to calibrate on an understanding of how often, what's that expectation? And then what's our responsibility, you heard George Ellis articulate this in his monitoring report. What's our responsibility is district staff to implement those progress checks and then follow up if we're not seeing those things that are happening. So there's been a lot of work that this team has done, members of Chris's team, member of Lena, I'm looking at Lena and Colleen and Rebecca here, and our special education team too, to train all of our site-based folks on this progress monitoring and on Orton Gillingham so we can connect those dots.
Thank you. But it's something that's sort of in the, in the, yeah, I do appreciate that there's been a lot of work. And I want to thank all of you here and all of the educators that have, I mean, it's been a huge shift, obviously. Lastly, my last question is about the math data, especially for the African-American middle schoolers. So I'll never forget last spring when we saw some of the data for outcomes, and it was something like 15% of African-American seventh graders were proficient in math. And when I look at the numbers here, it's almost 40% it looked to me. And so I'm wondering what happened? Like, that is a phenomenal shift. Is my memory wrong? Or do we, I mean, you know, it's still not enough. But I think, you know, reading and arithmetic, those are really our most important. Yeah, so what happened there? Because that just blew me away. It blew me away last year in a bad way, and such a big shift is.
Am I wrong? I don't know if you're, because you're, are you comparing STAR to STAR? Or are you comparing STAR to CASP?
Oh, I'm comparing STAR to CASP. Yeah, okay, that's why. Question answered. Thanks. I hope that that data also improves so dramatically and that I can be so happy when we see that. A girl can be optimistic. Thank you.
Also, just to quickly add in reference to your previous question, we do tag our special programs, including Bridge within EduClimber. So we are able to pull different groups for different types of data analysis.
No, we have it. I just don't know if we're using it.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the comprehensive review, and everybody's hard to work here. As other board members have noted, we really appreciate the efforts towards a constructive outcome of improvement and effectuating our mission. I really appreciate in your presentation, the slides with getting to know the interventionists and the work that they do. That's obviously a critical position. They form, they can be very important change makers inside of the district. In that sense, my question is geared towards that. We're talking about next steps. Math, as we all have know and have discussed here, is an area where there can be more improvements, as in particular pivoting from middle school into high school. I see that with next steps, we have draft instructional framework and a district-wide vision for mathematics, which is very exciting. This is something that's been proclating and been asked for some time by members of the public. How does the work of folks like Juliana Jones, who in secondary contexts are working on, as an interventionist, this issue of managing this balance and the responsiveness between differentiation and intervention? How does that type of on-the-ground work feed into the coming instructional framework and district-wide vision for mathematics?
Thank you, Director Chang. So if I understand your question, it's really connecting the boots on the ground every day in the classroom, and then making sure that those lived experiences translate into what we say is our vision and framework for math.
There's a great way to do it.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so as part of our M-Cubed group, we are fortunate to have seventeen educators. So we have eleven elementary math teachers. We have three middle school math teachers, and then we have several high school and independent school math educators. So these are folks that are having these experiences daily. Some of them also are intervention teachers, so their voices are front and center and at the table as we go about this process of creating this vision and framework.
Great, thank you. So they're doing a lot of committee engagement with you as you're drafting and preparing this framework. I look forward to seeing some of the presentations on that framework.
Absolutely. Thanks.
All right, now on to me. So first and foremost, I do want to highlight that overall, our data as a district is something that we, we should be proud of. I'll get to our subgroup data in a second, but our overall data looks really, really good as a district. And I'm talking about both our CASP data as well as our STAR data. And what I always look for when I'm looking for data is not just how many students we have in the blue, but how many students are increasing. And that is, that's incredibly important. And when we look at it from a perspective on CASP, it's really year after year. And then for STAR, as you all already know and mentioned, it's from winter to, to spring or summer, and winter to spring and or fall to, you know what I'm saying? And I think it's so important that we can see continuous growth in our students and that's what we, we always look for. And I know that we have a lot to be proud of in terms of our ongoing literacy efforts as well as our math efforts. And so I want to take just a moment to, to highlight that. Now, as it relates to our STAR reading, so in the assessment data for grade six through eight, there was a, you know, a small decrease in our students who required urgent intervention on the STAR testing. And we look for the increase of students who are moving to the yellow, to the green and to the blue, but we also highlight and identify the decrease of students who are in the red. And that's, you know, phenomenal. And I'm sure, as you mentioned, Director Albeck earlier, that's because of the work of our ongoing diagnostic assessments or ongoing assessments throughout the year. And, you know, which we know was really crucial for our students and because of stronger tier one instruction. You all know, I'm always up here. I'm like, okay, all this is great, but what's happening for first instruction in the classroom and how are we improving first instruction? And so I'm happy to hear that, but I am interested to know a little bit more about our students who are on the cusp. So our students who STAR identifies as our intervention or on watch students, those students are in the, you know, our students who are in the yellow, really just about to get to the green and with more, I'm sure, I'm sure intervention support can get all the way to the blue as we have, you know, the greatest expectations for our students. But I think those are students who we, we spend a lot of time talking about students in the red, but our yellow students are really our students who are just right, just right there. And I'm wondering, I'm wondering what can be done in terms of district-wide, entire district approach to intervention? So I think it was really great to hear all of the stories from our interventionists throughout the district and all of the wonderful things that they are doing to really make the difference at the school sites that they're serving. But what are we doing collectively? I think that, you know, we always know that education is not a one size fits all approach. And so I definitely want to identify and highlight that. And I think that there is also much to say about what we do collectively as a district that trickles down to everyone. And so I'd like to know what your thoughts are around that, what your plans are. And then I have like four more questions. So can we start there?
And I think, I mean, you've just done a big picture and I'll see if my team has other things that they want to add, is a lot of what we shared in the context of the theory of improvement. So what are we doing as a district? As a district, we have invested heavily in shared professional development. We had all of our teachers in grades K through 12 last year, complete the core reading training. And so that helps with alignment on specific practices and then expectations about what we would want with the expectations about what we need to be seeing in daily reading instruction. So for example, daily phonics should be happening. That gets connected to the observation and feedback. So how do we know that that's happening? And what are our systems and routines for making sure that the observation and feedback are happening? What else are we doing as a district? As a district, we have moved to an aligned assessment system through STAR and DIBELS. We have established expectations and routines and support. You heard Lena talk about the Brea team going out to individual school sites to help support with that assessment to ensure that we're doing that. And we're now moving to space where we're looking at regular data cycles and moving into more strategic progress monitoring. So I think what you saw and what I really appreciated about each individual teacher's story is, you know, there were some mindset shifts that had to happen, not with these, necessarily with these particular teachers, but in terms of like, how do we understand the importance of that shared assessment and then how that's connected to practices? We are now able to have more aligned conversations with our teachers and our school leaders because we have a shared vocabulary and expectation around what we are, we would expect to see in literacy. And our work with math is, is moving in that direction too, starting with that vision. So I don't know if you all have other things you want to add to that.
Can, can I ask, can I just get a little bit more specific? So, you know, fully aware and you all just shared your efforts around professional development or your efforts around assessment, which I, you know, highlighted earlier in my comments. But I think what I'm really looking to hear is a plan of action that says at every school site, we are doing X, Y, and Z, right? So professional development is great because it allows everyone to be trained and get the same amount of information, but training and implementation looks different from site to site. And so if my future kid is going to one school, I'll know that they'll get this specific type of intervention. I'll know that they'll have, have interventionists who have all been trained and are all using the same language and are all using the same assessment. But what does that look like in day-to-day practice at every single school site? Does, does my question make sense to you? I'm asking more so not about training and not about assessments, but what it actually looks like in practice? What do, do small size, small groups and heterogeneous or homogeneous groups look like at every single school site? What does building academic vocabulary for students look like at every single school site? And how are we aligning it so that it all looks the same for every single stu, every, it all looks the same at every single school site? I know that we give students, you know, what they need to succeed, but I'm, what I'm hearing from the community is the need for alignment at every single school site. Like one student may get something at Washington, for example, and it may look completely different at Rosa Parks. That's, that's what I'm asking. And if we don't have a plan yet, then my direction is how, how do we work towards one?
Excellent question. I appreciate it because I believe that one of the biggest equity gaps in all districts, but Berkeley as well, is the variance in the quality of education that students potentially get from school to school, from teacher to teacher. And it is our hope, especially with a curriculum instruction department, to have stronger alignment and coherence across our school district. So I do believe in the last, you know, few years, we're getting closer to that. And we also believe that, you know, each of our teachers responds to the students that sit before them and not all those students are the same. But with that said, I do, I, I think we are operating when, within this framework of learn it, expect it, support it, and then monitor it. And what I would say that this looks like a very concrete example, Director Brown, is we've been focusing a lot of time on foundational skills with literacy. What does phonics instruction look like? So we spent, you know, the Core Reading Academy shifting it along. And then this year, really focusing on what that early phonics and literacy instruction should look like. So that's the learn it, right? So to your, to that point around the professional learning, so on and so forth. But then the next part that I think potentially is an opportunity is what is it, what does it look like to expect it, right? What do, what do our site leaders need to be doing and what do they need to know? And how do they need to be able to engage with the teachers on their campus to have those conversations when they go into a class and they do observe both the positive like, whoa, I really appreciated the brisk pace in the phonics sequence, but I was noticing that the schwa sound was coming up in, in your, as you were teaching it as well. So like having those conversations so that the expectation is being reinforced, not only by seat leaders, but we have, we have the privilege of having literacy coaches, right? And then the supporter, like, we're not going to get it right every single time, but we, we, we can expect something and then we can support. And I feel like if we had that framework for all of our disciplines, for all of our, you know, what we expect, the X, Y, Zs, like you said, we'll get closer to that alignment and coherence that I truly do believe, and I think our district believes is, is needed. And we also respect the art of, of the teaching out of the classroom as well. I don't know if that helps.
And I, I appreciate your response because, you know, we want to respect not just teacher, but interventionist autonomy. I think that that's really, really important. And I also think it's important that we have alignment and that when we talk about equity, we also have to like, not just talk about equity, but talk about equality too, and how things can look equal, but still provides, look equal at each school site, but still provide students with a little bit extra of what they, they may need. So thank you for your response.
And I think this answers your question. Well, to start, it's an honor to be sitting in front of you tonight for the first time. I just wanted to add that we didn't choose these highlighted educators because they're outliers necessarily. We chose them because we thought they were representing what is happening at all of the school sites. And my conversation with Ms. Jones, with Juliana Jones, was, was very interesting because she talked about having a district-wide math intervention curriculum at middle school for the first time and that they have had intervention classes before, but it was kind of at the whim of the teacher to develop the curriculum and, and we, and so if you have a good teacher, you know, that year, or someone with more expertise around intervention, you know, it's, it's not going to be equal. But she said, she really enjoyed going to the other middle schools and talking with the other math intervention teachers kind of for the first time around a shared curriculum.
Beautiful. Thank you for that response because you actually just answered two of my other questions, one around curriculum and then one around shared practices with our school. So thank you for doing that. So now I just have one question left. I want to ask about, Ms. Sweeney, when you were talking and we were looking at the STAR assessment data for grades three through five, you highlighted that unfinished learning for our Black and African-American students as well as our Latinx students still need it to happen. And I think the same can be said, of course, about math when we look at our math data. And so I'm wondering, and this is a question for everyone, of course, but I'm wondering, what are we doing from a culturally relevant approach to address this unfinished learning? And I'm asking this question because I've looked at this, I've sat on this dais for almost seven years, right? And I've looked at this academic gap presented by data and it's been the same year after year after year after year. I will say that this year it is actually starting to look a, a little bit better. So I'm happy about that. But the gaps are significant, right? And so I think we continue to say like targeted instruction, targeted instruction, targeted instruction. But as we move towards budget conversations, it's important to know like what is working and where the gaps are so that we can do our work on the dais and make record, make financial recommendations to either support what is working or to help fill the gaps. So I know that on the elementary level, that our partners who are working with African-American success framework are providing some, some coaching for our interventionists on the elementary level. And I'm really excited about that. I've been hearing from community members that that is working and working well. So then that's something that we need to continue to support. But what more needs to be done, especially with a culturally responsive lens?
So following that, I, I do want to highlight that with, I have the privilege of working with response to intervention, interventionists at the elementary level as well as the middle school level. And we've been able this, this academic year to partner with our African-American success framework in providing our interventionists with a six-part series on providing response to intervention techniques and approaches that are culturally and linguistically responsive, rigorous and, and relevant. So that work, you know, it, it, it's immense work. And I just wanted to point to one, one, one intervention that we're, we are using right now with our interventionist or one support.
And thank you for that response, Ms. Sweeney. I think we were talking about the same thing. I just mentioned, but it's good to know that they also are having the opportunity to work with our middle school division as well, because that's where we're seeing a lot of the areas of need. And so, so thank you so much for taking the time to, to respond to that. My question stands, what's happening at the high school? And additionally, like what more, what are, what are additional needs? What, what can we support? What do we need to fund? What do we need to do? Because we've been in this crisis for a long time and we want to get out of it and we want to help our students. We want to support our students as well as support our educators. And so what are your recommendations for us so that we can make good fiduciary decisions to help, you know, support those needs and those gaps?
I mean, I think you actually said it in one of your earlier comments, like one of the foundational things that we can do is have a strong tier one and tier one, have strong tier one instruction, which would include those tier one materials. The most significant investment that we are going to make as a district this year in particular, and generally would be around our elementary curriculum. I think the team has done a lot of work, particularly as we were looking at materials to adopt, to ensure that we were meeting our responsibility as teachers and educators of students who are in a diverse community, that those materials reflected our student population, which is one of the reasons why we're piloting the Fish Tank materials. The, the national review that was conducted out of the Cary Division in the University of Minnesota, most of those curriculums scored pretty low on the cultural relevancy component of those materials. Fish Tank was higher, was, was higher and, you know, BOSD sort of supported the review of those materials based on information and feedback that we were getting from our core partners and then some of our sister school districts. So I do think that that is going to be a, an, one of the other moves that we're going to be making and a pretty significant investment that we're going to ask you to vote on.
And, and beyond that, looking forward to our next presentation in a few minutes. You're going to be hearing more specifically around our ethnic studies work. And I, I feel like how that brings a lot of the cultural, cultural and linguistic responsibility is contextualized for the Berkeley context to our students, which builds that engagement, that, that, that embodiment of what, what our Berkeley values are. So, but I think like for your question is a little bit deeper, like there's the, there's the curriculum, but it's also the instruction. And what are those like instructional strategies that are cultural and responsiveness beyond what is being taught? And I think we, we have some work to do around that. So let us get back to you on the further plan.
I'll let you, I'll let you get back to me on that. And I want, so I, I think you hit the nail right on the head. Like it, it absolutely is curriculum. It's absolutely instruction and still it is intervention as well. And so if it looks like an expansion, if it looks like more resource allocations towards instruction, in, towards intervention, specifically at the high school level, or if it looks like tiered instruction for our Black and African-American and Latinx students, that is maybe a little different than the instruction that we are providing, or the intervention, excuse me, that we're providing for the entire district. Like we trust you all as the experts. So inform us, we want to, you know, of course collaborate with you, but we trust you as the experts. So inform us so we can make good decisions up here. Okay. Thank you all so much for your presentation. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay. Thank you very, very much. Ms. Sweeney, I hope you feel better. Colleen, thank you for joining us as well. And we will move on to our next presentation that will focus on what we just talked about, curriculum adoption. And so this curriculum adoption presentation really focuses on curriculum adoption for literacy, ethnic studies, NA push. So we invite our next presenters to join us at this time. Thank you.
Yes. So as those presenters are making their way, this is the third chapter of our three-chapter story this evening. Just Um, just also recognizing that we have said all along, even through the work that we've been doing with literacy is that it's, it's not about curriculum. It's about the teaching that is happening in the classroom and the individual act uh interactions that our teachers, our site leaders, our instructional assistants, our specialists are having with our students. But the content does become a vehicle for that engagement and interaction. Um, and Director Albeck has done a lot of work with his still newly formed team, we're a year and a half in to articulate that process for curriculum adoption. Um, and we're going to be looking at that in, in the context of three different types of curriculum adoption that are going to be happening at this spring.
All right. We will use our time very efficiently. We planned and planned and planned to make sure that this uh goes within time. We recognize that it's getting late. Um, and I want to appreciate the team that sits before you um for all the work that we put into not only playing this presentation, but all the work that has gone into the processes that we'll now share with you. Um, I'll let the team go ahead and introduce themselves, um their, their position, their pronouns, and the work that they'll represent tonight.
I'm Joemi Ito Gates. She her pronouns. I am the ethnic studies teacher and special assignment. I'm also a mother in the district to a third grader. Uh, I also want to mention that today is the day of remembrance when executive order nine oh six six was signed, uh which legally allowed for over a hundred thousand Japanese Americans to be incarcerated in prison camps. So I want to acknowledge that day today. Thank you.
Um, I'm Annie J. Fishberg. I'm a vice principal at Berkeley High School. Um, and I'm over textbook adoption. So I'm here to talk about some of the adoption processes that have happened at the high school so far and uh plans for the future.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Ragosa, principal at Berkeley High School and also the parent of a second grader at Sylvia Mendez. Uh, and I'm also here to speak to what the curriculum adoption process has looked like for AP US history at Berkeley High School.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and get started and ground ourselves in our mission, which is to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. And I could think of many things that improve the lever of student academic achievement. And I know that what the curriculum that sits before our students that our teachers get to teach um is one of those significant levers. So excited to present to you on tonight. Um, tonight we have three main goals for you. Uh, first is to identify the role that curriculum plays in supporting academic achievement. Second is to outline BUSD's curriculum adoption process. And then third is to provide examples of process, process adherence throughout this school year as it relates to our adoption procedures. Uh, so we're going to go ahead and get started by recognizing the critical role that curriculum plays in student learning. Um, what we know and what research says is that well-designed, high-quality curriculum that is implemented well can ensure that students, regardless of their background, um ensures that they have access to knowledge and skills that they need to thrive. Um, as a well-known ed researcher, Mike Schmoker powerfully states, the single greatest determinant of learning is not socioeconomic factors or funding levels. It is what we teach and the effectiveness that we teach it in. Um, this is why curriculum adoption is such an important process. And that's why you all, as our esteemed board, get to approve uh our recommendations. The instructional core is the relationship between us as educators, our students, and the content that we teach. Um, the instructional materials that we use with our students matters. It has a direct impact on their academic achievement and our district's ability to meet our identified LCAP goals. Um, in BUSD, we take this very seriously, which is why we follow a structured curriculum adoption process that you see on the right side of the slide before you. This process unfolds in three key phases and seven structured steps. Each step is designed to ensure rigorous evaluation, broad stakeholder engagement, and a commitment to selecting materials that reflect the needs of BUSD's students and community. And I, I, I emphasize that because I think that's important. Um, BUSD i- is unique and we want to make sure that what is taught is um very reflective of our students. Um, so tonight we'll walk through this process using three ongoing curriculum adoptions as examples for you all to see what it looks like. Um, you'll hear updates on the K five language arts adoption. You'll hear updates on the AP US history and the ethnic studies curriculum adoptions. Um, these three adoptions were chosen specifically because they represent a range of what the term curriculum actually means. Um, you'll, you'll hear about a large, comprehensive, grade span-wide adoption to a subject-specific textbook selection, to the development of in-house ta- instructional units tailored to our district's needs. Um, throughout this presentation, we'll connect each of these seven steps of our process with artifacts that illustrate what this work has looked like in action, whether it's teacher feedback, student engagement, or community input that has helped shaped our decisions. Does that sound all right? All right, let's do it. Uh, so with that, so we'll begin by looking at how we establish our curriculum adoption process. So in the first step of our adoption process, we establish our process. This foundational step ensures that our curriculum adoption work is inclusive and it is transparent. Uh, one of the most critical aspects of this phase is assembling an adoption committee that represents a broad range of diverse group stakeholders, people who bring different perspectives and expertise to the table. Um, for our K five language arts adoption, we were intentional in selecting members to ensure representation across all grade levels, across all schools, and across areas of expertise. Um, as shown on this image on the slide, our committee included teachers from grade levels, ensuring that students' needs at different development stages were considered. We also sought representation from elementary schools to capture diverse site perspectives and experiences. And additionally, we intentionally sought out educators with expertise in language development and special education expertise, um ensuring that the curriculum meets the needs of students who have been historically underserved or under responded to. These educators play a critical role in supporting multilingual learners and students with disabilities groups for whom we are committed to driving accelerated growth as outlined in our three by five target. The artifacts on the slide before you illustrate how we actively recruited and engaged educators in this process by assembling a committee that reflects the voices and experiences of our school community. We laid the groundwork for a thoughtful, collaborative, and sent equity-centered curriculum selection process.
In the second step of BUSD's adoption process, we develop a lens for what we are looking for in a set of instructional materials. Part of that process is examining our local BUSD data in order to establish priorities. In the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two academic year, several listening circles were held virtually. So caregivers and community members could share their hopes and ideas for a ticket at twelfth grade rollout of ethnic studies. There were also several in-person listening circles with students at the middle and high school levels. Additionally, a survey was sent out to the entire BUSD community. The ethnic studies advisory committee was formed in the spring of the same year and that body synthesized the findings from the survey and listening circles, creating a set of recommendations based on community input. One of the leading recommendations was to create in-house, anti-racist, age-appropriate, culturally responsive ethnic studies curriculum for TKA to eighth grades and to update the ninth grade curriculum based on and guided by the educators teaching ethnic studies at Berkeley High School. What has helped us to develop our lens is to center the tenants of ethnic studies led by our expert educators so that our children who have been historically marginalized, especially those most impacted by the ongoing achievement gap, or as Gloria Letson Billings calls it, the education debt, can see themselves affirmed and uplifted by our curriculum.
In the third step of our adoption process, we narrow our choices. In this stage, we take a broad set of curriculum options and we begin refining our focus, ensuring that only the most high-quality, standards-aligned, and equity-centered materials move forward in our process. This step is critical because it allows us to focus our deep study on piloting efforts of materials that best meet the needs of BUSD's students and educators. For our K five language arts adoption, this work was grounded in both local educator expertise and national research. The image at the top of the slide before you represents our collaboration with Dr. Kim Gibbons and her team, who conducted a national review of all language art curriculum options, a process that took over ten thousand hours of research. This comprehensive study helped ensure that we were starting with the strongest, most research-backed materials before moving into deeper levels of analysis at the district level. Building on this national review, we brought together BUSD teachers to carefully analyze the curriculum options, discuss key instructional components such as foundational skills, reading comprehension, and writing developments. This process wasn't just about reviewing textbooks. It was about identifying materials that align with our instructional vision, support diverse learners, and reflect the priorities of our BUSD community. By narrowing our choices through the structured, research-based, and teacher-led process, we ensured that the next phase investigating our materials was focused, intentional, and grounded in best practice.
In the fourth step of our adoption process, we investigate the materials. In this stage, we deeply study each of the materials that we are considering, rec- request sample materials from available publishers, and determine what types of professional learning our staff may need before piloting materials. For our AP US history, or APUSH, adoption at Berkeley High School, we turn to the College Board website, which provides a list of suggested textbooks that meet the curricular requirements of AP US history. While the list is not meant to be exhaustive, it currently offers eighteen different textbooks for educators to consider. One of those textbooks is Give Me Liberty, which is the material that we most recently piloted and are considering at the moment.
In addition, we also consulted the AP US history teacher community made available on the College Board website, where you can read different teachers' experiences teaching and piloting each of the different textbooks that we were considering. We also reached out to publishers for sample texts, scope and sequence guides, and implementation guides. Throughout this stage, we worked with a team of AP US history teachers, a small school teacher leader to plan out the pilot, including teacher collaboration on implementation, how we introduce new materials to our students, and how we collect feedback from students, piloting teachers, and our community.
In our fifth step, we pilot the materials and I will speak to the piece around observing pilots and gathering observations. So there are currently seven ethnic studies pilot units and twenty-two piloting teachers with most school sites represented. As part of the piloting process, we are gathering feedback from students, families, and piloting teachers. In the spring, we will have a series of in-person meetings with the piloting teachers to reflect on the piloting process as well as on the data. So we can then synthesize and apply teacher, student, and family input to help inform curriculum revisions. Another exciting aspect of the pilot process is that for the fifth grade pilot unit from Jamestown to Revolution, our new mayor, Adina Ishi, was interviewed for the final lesson on reparations and Berkeley Unified's reparations task force work that she was engaged in. She has generously agreed to visit our piloting classes to talk about that work as well as her new job as the mayor of Berkeley. In closing, I'd like to share a quote from a student, which is hot off the press from a school visit I did earlier today at Ruth Acti in one of our wonderful piloting teachers' classrooms. Shout out to Jessica Stern. During a lesson from the pilot unit who came to Berkeley, a spotlight on African American and Asian American stories, Jessica was teaching about some of the Berkeley murals that students will see on a field trip next week, which are celebrating the stories they've been learning about African American and Asian American uh folks in our beautiful city of Berkeley. She asked the question, um, when you look at the murals, what will you see next week? Because she was previewing some of the murals. And one student stated, when you look at the murals, you'll see our ancestors and what they did to make us proud and to not give up on our dreams.
In the six and seven steps of our adoption process, we decide and then we implement. After months of careful evaluation, piloting, and gathering stakeholder input, we will reach the decision-making and implementation phase. This is where we take everything we've learned from national research, teacher analysis, classroom piloting, and student feedback, and we make a recommendation to you, our esteemed Board of Education. A key part of our decision-making is ensuring that we gather feedback from multiple perspectives, educators, families, and students, all of whom bring valuable insights into how a curriculum is experienced in classrooms and at the home. The artifacts on the slide illustrate how we have structured some of these evaluation opportunities for our K five language arts um adoption. By integrating multiple sources of feedback, we work to ensure that our final curriculum recommendation to you all is not just research-based and standards-aligned, but also deeply informed by the lived experiences of those engaging with it every day, our students, families, and teachers. Lastly, in BUSD, we recognize that curriculum adoption is not just an internal process. It is a community effort. We recognize that families, caregivers, and community members are essential partners in ensuring that students receive a high-quality education. That is why we place a strong emphasis on keeping our community informed, providing opportunities for meaningful input, and engaging them as thought partners in this work. For our K five language arts process, we have hosted eight community input opportunities, including intentionally affinity-based sessions to hear directly from families who have students from have been historically underserved. These sessions included engaging black African American families, multilingual learner families, and families of students with learning differences, ensuring that their perspectives informed not only our curriculum selection and supported more equitable outcomes for our students.
So pictured here uh on this slide, you'll see um that in the spring of twenty twenty-four, the Berkeley Unified community was invited to attend an ethnic studies showcase where sample lessons from all of the seven new pilot units were shared and attendees were invited to offer feedback and engage with the materials. A panel of experts and students spoke to the importance and impact of ethnic studies. And at the end of the event, there was an honoring uh and award ceremony for community changemakers who were featured in the pilot units. People such as uh Carol Kennerly, Beatrice Libya Cutler, Bee and Harvey Dong, Tina Jones Williams, Anthony Brown, and Karine Gold.
For our AP US history process, before the pilot, we reached out to all of the families of current AP US history students. We described the curriculum options and the pilot process and invited them to an after-school information session to ask questions and provide feedback. We hosted this information session and responded to parent feedback and questions live in the meeting, but also over email. Um, and then the AP US history teachers also collected feedback from their students through informal interviews and through a formal class survey. And we've been very encouraged by the feedback that we've received so far um and look forward to our next steps.
Thank you for spending some time with us and listening. And now we'll take your questions.
Thank you all so much uh for that presentation. Since I went last, last time, I'll go first uh this time and I will make it quick. But um just a couple of appreciations first, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the six-step um curriculum adoption process. I think that that was, for me, one of the best curriculum adoption, adoption processes I've seen. And so I really just want to take a second to highlight and um appreciate that. I think um especially as it relates to um the narrowing our choices um step. We heard some feedback earlier and you were here for it um in public comment and as well as received um some uh feedback and emails really calling on us to not just use research-based uh mater- curriculum materials, but to use evidence-based materials. Um, and tonight you all really talked about how we are actually doing that, um especially uh through the work of um Kim Gibson and using that um information to uh to identify what works well. And then as it relates to our um, to our um AP history curriculum, um using the um I guess I'll say the narratives from teachers who have already used this curriculum and say it works. And I think um having that evidence-based approach really makes it um a little bit more uh meaningful for our families to know that there is evidence-based approach, uh evidence-based approach. But I think for our educators and for our students as well, um to know that other people around um the state, around the country have used these materials and have seen some um progress, especially as it relates um to what you identified earlier, Director Albeck, um as our student groups who have been underserved um and underrepresented in a lot of curriculum. So thank you for that. I also um really appreciate um the use of teacher voice or teacher pilots, or rather. Um, I think that that is always so important. Um, it's one thing to hear the evidence-based um curriculum, but it's another thing to see, does it work for us in BUSD? BUSD is such a um uh unique community and we need things to work for us. So hearing um the piloting um in our schools with our teachers and our students, um and then also to hear their voice and their feedback about what works well and what they like and maybe even dislike about um the different curriculum uh options are important. And highlighting our students through our listening circles as well is also um really important. So thank you for that. Um, I also really appreciate the community collaboration efforts um with our caregivers and our families, um but also with our mayor. but also with our mayor and to hear that we are taking almost like a city approach to ensuring that the curriculum works for our students is really, really great. My one and only question is about the community input and feedback sessions. I saw that there were a number of them, which I really, really appreciate. And then I also saw that for the APUSH you all posted one, but also sent communication out to our families. And so I appreciate that. I do want to know what the attendance was like and how many families we had participate. And the reason I'm asking that is because what typically happens is we'll go through a process and then our families, just like Director Shunaski mentioned earlier, will say, "Oh, I didn't know anything about it. I wasn't able to give my feedback. I didn't participate. Like, this is all new information." And it is not because we're not providing the information. Most of the time, it's because our community turnout is really low. And so I'd like to know what the community turnout was for these events.
So the community turnout is low until you get some good food and then people turn out. So the one thing that we've become experts in is some really great food around Berkeley and providing that to all of our events. But humor aside, at least as it relates to the language arts, we had around at least 20 to 30 people showing up for all of our community engagements. For our affinity-based ones, we had roughly like six to 15, depending on them. But I would say pleasantly surprised how many folks are turning out. And we've been really purposeful around that, though, like going and flyering in front of school sites. Like, please come to this tonight for those folks that are like, "I'm not even sure what this is." Like, having that personal touch is something that has stood out. So we felt that it's been pretty solid turnout on the language arts front. And then I'll let you and me speak to the showcase.
Sure. I think roughly there was maybe 150-plus people who attended. It was well-attended. And I really want to just express a tremendous amount of gratitude to my OFEE colleagues because they really helped to make it a successful celebration and input session from the community. They've just been fantastic to collaborate with and so grateful to them. And working with them really ensured that it was a successful event.
I can talk to our AP US history textbook adoption. This textbook adoption process is new for the high school and so we're still working out the kinks. And it's worth noting that it's a much smaller textbook adoption. So we invited much fewer people. We did only get one parent who came to our Zoom information session, but we had a number of parents who emailed us afterwards saying, "Sorry, I missed it. Here are my questions." And so we're working on two pieces. One is how do we make these events easier for parents to attend and more likely that they'll know about them? But also just making sure that our follow-up communication is effective so that when parents do miss it and then reach out, they're getting the answers that they needed.
Thank you. I really appreciate you all's response to that. And the reason I'm also asking is because I have an idea or suggestion. I know we're going to go through mini-curriculum adoption conversations in the near future. And so one of my suggestions would be to really utilize the students. I think that we, you know, do a wonderful job to make sure that our caregivers, that our families, know about our curriculum adoption. And sometimes families don't show up because of time, because of other commitments, because of, you know, life and other things. But who will show up is our students. And so I'm wondering what it looks like in the future to have assemblies or to have town halls at the school sites that really get the students excited and get them to be the mouthpieces for our curriculum adoption. And then we'll go back and it may possibly inform their caregivers or community about the exciting curriculum that may come to their school sites. And then I'm sure from there, we'll get more parent involvement and participation. I really appreciated also hearing that you all held a Zoom information session as we know that sometimes it's hard for folks to come out. And so I also want to just make sure that we continue to keep that in mind in the future. So thank you for listening to my recommendation.
Director Chang, would you like to go?
Sure. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the presentation and the really clear and obvious thoughtful amount of work that has gone through your team with the adoption process, curriculum adoption process. And I also appreciate Associate Superintendent Uchindex's remark at the start that with regard to curriculum, it's more about content than those who put forth the content. And in terms of content, this seven-step process, I think, is really critical with getting stakeholder input, which is so important, particularly when curriculum and content today can be controversial. And there's many stakeholders here in Berkeley as well. I really, in particular, having this been noted by President Brown as well, appreciate this aspect of the piloting of the materials and this engagement with subject matter experts that are external to the district and also internal, but also pulling in external subject matter experts. And also pulling in our students who are subject matter experts in a particular way as well. They are certainly our stakeholders. And I want to reflect my appreciation on the amount of work this team has done, in particular, the TSA and the ethnic studies contacts of taking her time to very carefully run this process through a number of years and engaging not just with internal stakeholders, but external stakeholders across the district and weathering a period of time where ethnic studies has been challenged. And again, I appreciate the comments as well that Mr. Director Albrecht had noted at the front end that, you know, we are also emphasizing an important value of Berkeley values, local values, and doing so in a mission-oriented manner with regard to our goals, the five Es here in Berkeley. So I really want to note my appreciation for the amount of work that's gone in through this and the time and care of years in all of this piloting, both for ethnic studies, but APUSH and everything else. I see you got Eric Foner on there. He's an amazing historian. I'm really glad that you pulled him on for APUSH. And I'm looking forward to the curriculum implementation in the future. So thanks again. Thank you.
Director Vasudevan?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for, I appreciate the quick, easy seven-step overview. That's great. I said a question and I wanted to just uplift what President Brown said about using student voice. And I know that this isn't the same, but in the DCAC committee, I've seen a lot of like special education students come out and talk more about like what would work best for them in the classroom and for different disabilities. And I think that's really empowering for our students to be able to share that feedback directly with their educators and with their families in that space. Very brave of our special education students to do that in that setting. And I think it's important just in general, as you're engaging different demographics, to really look at the special education community as we're looking at the adoption of different curriculum, just because their needs. I think like first, special education students are masters, I think, at advocating for themselves as they get older. Like, they've learned to do that in a way that I think is really wonderful and empowering in BUSD. I think they have a lot to share. And also just like how to make sure that the materials really work for them, right? Our materials have to work for all learners. I would love to hear, in the, I guess for literacy adoption, because we've done probably the most amount of like robust engagement out of the different examples that you used, because we've been at it for a long time. What would you share as like a positive highlight where you went out and maybe you sought feedback from perhaps like English learners or different affinity groups? And that impacted the way that you selected the pilots or that impacted implementation? I'm just curious, like, what's a successful model of us going out? Because sometimes when you're talking to parents, it feels very one-directional. Like, you're sharing something that you have to do, either because it's required or because we're complying with something. But when we're getting that feedback back from the community, right? Like, how do we operationalize to change and pivot maybe how we thought about implementing a curriculum? I'm just curious like what you would define as like a successful example of us taking that feedback from the community and perhaps pivoting on implementation?
I could speak to sort of how we have changed our engagement with the community based on feedback. So we first came to the, at least those literacy sessions with "community listening and learning" was the phrase. And then we got some feedback around that they felt like they were doing more listening and potentially were not doing as much learning from their experiences. So the last few sessions that we have facilitated with our community, sort of the way that we went about with the planning and being purposeful on getting feedback and internalizing the feedback has changed. But it's always this tension, right? Because we want to give information. Families like regularly say like, "We don't know what's going on." So we want to give information, but we also want to get information back. And to your questions explicitly, some of the concerns or questions that came up were, "How are we getting information from students?" So full credit to Joemi for that cute little image on like the orange juice, like half-full or the, but some of that came from, "Let's make sure that we're asking our students about their own experience through their experience with curriculum." So that's an example of how a few things that have changed throughout the process for us.
Director Shunaski?
Okay. Well, thank you all so much for answering all of our questions. Thank you for your presentation. And thank you for staying here so late this evening. We look forward to seeing you again, actually, in the next two board meetings for another presentation. So thank you all so much and enjoy the rest of your evening. Board members, I'll call your attention again to the information items that I mentioned earlier, the board policies, as well as the administrative regulation. Please govern yourselves according to those as we will see them on our consent calendar during the next meeting. We will now move to the second opportunity for extended public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, is there anyone online for public comment? Seeing none, are there any additional board member comments? Hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting at 10:39 tonight. Good evening, everyone.